Buenas tardes a todos. Dr. Victor Trevino, alcalde de la ciudad de Laredo. Bienvenidos a las Chambres del Consejo de la Ciudad de Laredo, donde se realizará la presentación de reconocimientos. Empezaremos con... El alcalde presentará las siguientes reconocimientos. Empezaremos con... J.W. Nixon, Golden Spurs. La Ciudad de Laredo y el Consejo de la Ciudad lo reconocen. ¿Todos quieren ponerse en línea aquí? La Ciudad de Laredo y el Consejo reconocen que en su victoria, el 24º título nacional, los Golden Spurs competieron en la competición de danza de la Cráneo en marzo 29 de 2025. Felicidades a ellos. Tal vez tengamos que tomar una foto. ¿Quieres decir un par de palabras?
Gracias, alcalde y Ciudad de Laredo por invitarnos. Y a cargo de nuestra administración, estamos muy agradecidos por esta oportunidad de poder mostrar el... Lo siento. De poder mostrar el talento que tiene Laredo. Y solo quiero dar un gran saludo a las chicas, porque a cargo de... Además de las largas prácticas y en la escuela, también mantienen su nivel académico, su atención y sus vidas en casa. Sus jóvenes y señores dedicados que tenemos en nuestro equipo. Y estoy muy orgullosa de ellos. Así que a cargo de la administración de Nixon High, yo misma y mi entrenador, la señora Gabby, me gustaría agradecer a la ciudad y al alcalde. Muchas gracias por esta oportunidad.
Antes de... Los consejeros, Gutierrez, diré un par de palabras.
Buenas tardes, damas y caballeros. Gracias a todos por estar aquí en las Chambres. Es realmente importante que estéis aquí siendo defensores de vuestros hijos aquí. A todas las chicas y los señores que están actuando o que dan show con los Golden Spurs. Nixon es mi alma materna. Gradué hace mucho tiempo desde allí. ¿1994 creo que fue? 94, sí. Mucho tiempo atrás. Pero quiero decir, chicos, felicidades y muchas gracias. Continúe representando Laredo como lo hacen. Continúe representando el verde y el oro, porque ellos viven para siempre, chicos. Felicidades. Gracias a todos.
Sí, un poco más atrás.
Algunos de ustedes no pueden verlos, así que solo...
Solo asegúrense de que puedan verme para que podamos verlos.
Ahí está.
Uno, dos, tres.
Bueno, te doy una oportunidad. Si quieres, ahí.
Uno más. Uno, dos, tres. Uno más. Uno, dos, tres.
Uno más aquí. Listo. Uno, dos, tres.
¿El fin es de pie? Uno, dos.
La siguiente reconocimiento. Alcalde y Consejo de la Ciudad de Laredo orgullosos de reconocer Tammy U. Ballet Folclórico, que competió en la competición de danza de la danza de la danza contemporánea y folclórica en el estado de McAllen, Texas. Felicidades. ¿Un par de palabras?
Sí, no sé. Sí, gracias. Mi nombre es Mayel López, directora de Tammy U. Ballet Folclórico. Solo quiero decir que estoy muy orgullosa de todos nuestros estudiantes. Somos un grupo grande de 40 estudiantes. No todos pudieron hacerlo. Pero nuestros estudiantes han estado trabajando muy duro. Preservamos las tradiciones y costumbres mexicanas a través de nuestro folclórico. Así que dan danza mexicana y folclórica. Siempre estamos viajando y actuando. Los estudiantes hicieron un trabajo genial en la competición estatal. Así que estamos muy orgullosos de ellos. Y también queremos decirles que estamos viajando a performar en Suiza este junio, no solo para representar a la Ciudad de Laredo, sino también nuestras raíces mexicanas. Así que estamos muy, muy orgullosos de todos nuestros estudiantes. Gracias.
Aquí vamos. Uno, dos, tres. Uno más. Y uno aquí, por favor. Uno, dos, tres.
Déjame ver uno más. Uno, dos, tres. Perfecto.
Gracias.
La siguiente. La Ciudad de Laredo y el Consejo nos gustaría reconocer el grupo de la escuela secundaria Elías Herrera bajo la dirección de Jorge L. García.
Un par de palabras. Buenas tardes a todos. Muchas gracias, alcalde y Consejo de la Ciudad, por todo lo que hacéis para nuestra hermosa ciudad. Mucha gente dice, no, pues que es el agua o algo así, pero eso nos mantiene aquí. Pero he estado con UIS durante 27 años y somos el producto de la maraña de Martin 94, señor también. Una tigre siempre es una tigre, señor. ¿Verdad? Pero, ya sabéis, realmente intrudimos. Como dijo el otro, nuestra comunidad está prosperando y muy, muy fuerte debido al apoyo de nuestros padres, debido al apoyo de nuestra administración y a todos los que ponen su esfuerzo en estos niños. No tenemos a todos aquí, porque entonces verías 120 estudiantes aquí. Así que decidimos venir con un grupo más pequeño. Pero estos niños han hecho un trabajo maravilloso viendo en la mañana, viendo en la tarde, viendo tarde en la noche. ¿Cuál es la última rehuencia que hemos tenido, chicos? Alrededor de las 8:30 p.m. Así que estudiantes de secundaria rehuencian así. Y, por supuesto, los niños de la escuela secundaria Cristian. Felicidades a ustedes. Esa fue mi alma materna, así que felicidades también. Sé que este es el grupo de la escuela secundaria Elías Herrera y hacemos un trabajo maravilloso a través de nuestro principal. Eso está aquí también. Señor Carlos Martínez, muchas gracias por tu apoyo, señor. Y, por supuesto, nuestro alcalde. Ya sabéis, muy, muy orgulloso de llamar a mí mismo un Laredo y todavía un Laredo. Incluso cuando me ofrecen un trabajo en San Antonio o Austin, aquí o allá, soy señor Laredo, bebé. Así que muchas gracias, ya sabéis, por la reconocimiento y muchas gracias por todo lo que hacéis. Gracias.
El alcalde de la Ciudad de Laredo y el Consejo de la Ciudad están reconociendo a la escuela secundaria Cristian Mariachi Los Triguillos de Oro bajo la dirección de Rubén Guadian. ¿Un par de palabras?
Señor De León, ven aquí, señor. Aquí merezco, aquí merezco. Mariachi, aquí de este lugar, ven aquí. Vamos a explicar un poco más español. Su primero que nada, alcalde, muchas gracias. Consejero, señora Cigarroa, muchas gracias por todo el reconocimiento que nos están dando. Muchas gracias a todos los papás por todo el apoyo que le dan al Mariachi. Y la otra persona en la escuela que no nos deja... Que no nos deja estar sin apoyo, señor De León. Señor De León, que nos da un apoyo al Mariachi. Sin todo este apoyo que tengamos, hubiéramos podido hacer todo lo que hemos hecho este año gracias a Dios. Todas las competencias que han ido, han sacado primer lugar de todas las miroscues. Hasta fuimos a TMD State y sacaron de 40... Que se ve, ¿verdad? De 40 mariachis que se metieron, sacaron 8. Ocho lugar. Y eso eran 20 escuelas de high school y 12 miroscues. Se aventaron a high school, varsity y todo eso. Pero todo eso no se podría sin todos ustedes. También aquí, señor Rodríguez, señor Pro, que para todos ando hablándoles a todos. No, hombre, pero sí la persona que siempre nos ha ayudado, señor De León. Desgraciadamente, ya se va a retirar. Pero muchas gracias por todo lo que hizo. Todo esto no se podía hacer sin usted. Por eso yo quería que él estuviera aquí, porque él es nuestra fundación del mariachi.
Vamos a tener un poco de espacio aquí para el alcalde y el consejo. Y más en la parte de atrás, vamos. Vamos a tener un poco de espacio aquí para el alcalde y el consejo. Y más en la parte de atrás, vamos. Un poco más. Este lado, ¿puedes moverte un poco? Este lado, tú también, tú también.
Y tú.
Sí, ahí. ¿Puedes estar aquí en medio? En frente, por favor.
Ahí está.
Ahí, perfecto. Muy bien. Tenemos que hacerlo a todos. Aquí vamos. Uno, dos, tres. Uno, dos, tres. Uno más. Todos mirando aquí, por favor. Uno, dos, tres.
Ahí está. Listo. Uno, dos. Uno, dos, tres.
Felicidades.
Bien. La siguiente presentación. El alcalde de Laredo y alcalde y Consejo de la Ciudad orgullosos de reconocer a los recibidores del Spirit of Laredo Scholarship hecho posible por la parcería entre la Fundación de la Comercio de la Ciudad de Laredo y la LGD, la Familia Killam. Vamos adelante. Felicidades. ¿Quién va a hablar?
Alcalde, a cargo de la familia Killam, quiero agradecerle, la señora consejera Cigarroa, la consejera Gutierrez y todo el resto del Consejo y el gerente de la ciudad por reconocer a estos jóvenes porque realmente hicieron un gran trabajo. Si no has tenido la oportunidad de ver sus videos, realmente necesitas verlos porque vinieron con ideas y lo que les tenemos que desear es que vean qué forma podemos ayudar a mantener a nuestra juventud en Laredo. Y lo que hicieron fue increíble. Y no es como buscar parques de agua o grandes ruedas de ferrocarriles. No, están buscando lugares de entretenimiento. El empatía, creo que alguien lo llevó. El otro fue solo un barrio vibrante. Fueron fantásticos. Tengo una imagen. Guardo una imagen de ellos en mi oficina porque me dan inspiración cada día cuando tengo problemas, ¿verdad? Así que me gustaría agradecer a Justin Heather, la Comercio de la Ciudad, por supuesto, que colabora con nosotros. Y tenemos algunos otros colegas aquí, Robert Noviello y Gabriela Trevino. Así que muchas gracias a todos por esta reconocimiento, por estos jóvenes individuos. Y son verdaderamente un buen testamento para nuestra sociedad. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias. Vamos a ir hacia allí para tomar una foto. ¿Tú la tomas aquí? Vale, lo harán aquí.
Tengo algunas palabras. ¿Puedo solo...?
Por supuesto. Ella es la abuela de Quenches.
Solo tengo algunas palabras. Solo quería compartir con... A cargo de la Ciudad de Laredo, estamos honrados de reconocer a los estudiantes destacados aquí hoy. Jóvenes académicos cuyos ideas forward-thinking que no están fuera de alcance, por cierto, demuestran que los días más brillantes de nuestra ciudad todavía están adelante. Ver las presentaciones que cada uno de ustedes creó y las ideas que compartieron llenaron personalmente con profunda optimismo para el futuro de Laredo. Tu creatividad y pasión y perspectivas frescas nos recuerdan exactamente por qué invertir en tus sueños es lo más importante que nuestra comunidad puede hacer. Así que sigue pensando con valentía, sigue preguntando preguntas desafiantes y nunca tengas miedo de empujar los límites. Tu visión y tu voz son esenciales para formar nuestras ciudades mañana. Y recuerda, la verdadera liderazgo es inspirar a otros y la torre ahora está en tus manos. Y sigue, nuevamente, sigue preguntando preguntas, desafiando la cuota de estatus e invito a otros a unirse a ti. Y estamos aquí para apoyarte a lo largo del camino y nuestro futuro es extremadamente brillante debido a cada uno de ustedes. Y gracias de nuevo a Killam Development y a Monique, la Comercio de Laredo, por coordinar esta increíble iniciativa y crear oportunidades para nuestros estudiantes brillar. Y tu inversión en nuestra juventud es una inversión en el mejor futuro de nuestra comunidad. Así que muchas gracias. Felicidades.
Bien, volveremos a las 5:30 para una reunión de Consejo de la Ciudad. Gracias. Reunión de orden. Reunión de Consejo regular de la Ciudad de Laredo, 11/10 Houston, 22 de abril de 2025. Todos estamos celebrando el pleno.
El pleno celebrado en el Capitolio de Estados Unidos de América y en el Republic of America, una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Momento de silencio, por favor. Queremos incluir un momento de silencio para el Papa Francis, un individuo que creía en la igualdad y fue un símbolo de nuestra humanidad en el mundo. También para el señor Onix Benavides. Gracias. Pueden sentarse. Señor secretario, llamada de rol, por favor.
Sí, alcalde. Alcalde Honorable, Dr. Victor D. Trevino.
Presentado.
Alcalde Honorable, membro del Consejo del Distrito 1, Gilbert González. Alcalde Honorable, membro del Consejo del Distrito 2, Ricardo Rangel Jr. Alcalde Honorable, membro del Consejo del Distrito 3, Melissa Cigarroa. Alcalde Honorable, membro del Consejo del Distrito 4, Ricardo Rick Garza.
Alcalde.
Alcalde Honorable, membro del Consejo del Distrito 5, Rubén Gutierrez Jr.
Presentado.
Alcalde Honorable, membro del Consejo del Distrito 6, Dr. Tyler King.
Aquí.
Alcalde Honorable, por 10, Vanessa Pérez.
Presentada.
Alcalde Honorable, membro del Consejo del Distrito 8, Alisa Cigarroa.
Presentada.
Alcalde, usted tiene una palabra.
Gracias. Antes de entrar en los comentarios de los ciudadanos, nos gustaría mencionar los elementos número 48, 49, 57A, 1, 2 y 3.
Alcalde, ¿podría me amender a 57E1 también, por favor? Lo siento. Mi corrección, corrección. 57C1.
Amén 57C1.
Y, alcalde, ¿podría también amender a 57B2?
Amén 57B2.
Alcalde, también, si podemos, el elemento 36, por favor.
Amén, el elemento 36, por favor. Bien, comentarios de los ciudadanos.
Es una motion, alcalde, la segundo. Yo segundo esa motion.
Motion segundo. ¿Todos en favor? Vale. Pos, motion pasa.
Que la firma de la receta.
Sí, alcalde.
Comentarios de los ciudadanos. Los ciudadanos pueden participar en comentarios en persona. Ciudadanos de Washington, los que proporcionan comentarios en persona se requieren de completar una carta de testigo y enviarla al secretario de la Ciudad a las 5:45 p.m. y identificarse en el micrófono. Los comentarios son limitados a tres minutos por el orador. El orador no puede pasar el minuto a cualquier otro orador. Todos los comentarios deben ser relevantes para el negocio de la ciudad y entregados de manera profesional. No se permitirán discusiones derogatorias. Tenemos varios comentarios de los ciudadanos. Empezaré con... Maribel García, Victor Trevino Jr.
Buenas tardes, alcalde honorable, Consejo de la Ciudad y administración.
Honables veteranos.
Gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Mi nombre es Victor Trevino Jr. y estoy aquí, don Latino Hall of Famer, Maribel García, para hablar a cargo de nuestras organizaciones atleticas y nuestra campaña para destrozar más el deporte y ayudar a través de actividades de caminata y otras actividades en toda la ciudad. Como pueden saber, el 129º anual Marathon de Boston ocurrió ayer donde yo junto con otros varios campeones locales participé en lo que se considera el Super Bowl de maratones. Maribel misma no es extraña al Marathon de Boston porque ha representado Laredo 10 veces, que incluyó caminar y sobrevivir del horrendo bombardeo y el ataque contra nuestro país en 2013. Ahora que tenemos dos carreras certificadas en Boston, carreras calificadoras en nuestra comunidad, esperamos que algunos de los nueve personas que calificaron entre las dos carreras representen Laredo, Nuevo Laredo el año próximo en el 130º anual Marathon de Boston. Así que con estas oportunidades vamos a ver algunos números históricos locales calificándose para el Marathon de Boston. Pero lo que eso también significa es que nos da una oportunidad única para promover a la gente cotidiana haciendo cosas increíbles e influir en nuestra trayectoria, que nos muestra ser una de las ciudades más deshechas del país. Y necesitamos cambiar eso. Y sabemos que podemos lograr esto y convertirlo en todo lo potencial que podemos lograr con eso. Pero todo empieza con un poco de oportunidad, un gran inspiración y un poco de motivación. Así que no estamos aquí para pedirle dinero porque el dinero no sustituye a la gente que quiere hacer esto por sí mismos y su familia. Solo pedimos su apoyo continuo como organismo de políticas en nuestra comunidad para promover eventos y actividades que enfocan una vida saludable y sanidad. Así que, alcalde, también estamos trabajando... So Mayor, we are also working with the city of New Laredo to work on more bi-national race opportunities, which we'll present at the next city council meeting, and something that is unique to us living in this part of the world. And in concluding, Mayor, please accept my medal for our veterans. As you know, the 129th Boston Marathon is not more so about racing, but it celebrates Patriots' Day, a celebration that spotlights the Battle of Lexington and Concord that led up to the American Revolution. There were people fought and died for this country's liberty and freedom from imperialism, a republic based on the consent of those governed. So I thank you for your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll try to put that medal at the showcase. Thank you very much. We have other comments here on several items. I don't know, they want to speak on them. Mr. Charles Martin.
Yes, sir. My name is Charles Martin, I live in North Laredo. I'll try to stick to the three minutes when I'm actually here because of the bond issue. And I wanted to make a couple of points for us to consider. I'm basically for the bonds, but they're written, as usual, in a bond program rather generally. And it's only normal, we can't get personal, if the chamber and other businesses want to get involved in the knowledge of where that money's going. So, you know, they're written in a general fashion. It says roads, I'm concerned about traffic, but I can say that, and they can say, well, that'll come out of the roads part of it. So there's, it's hard to pin down. But let's not get upset with people questioning the bonds on the face value. I'm actually, I'm actually here because our timing is not good. I've noticed that there has been, since this administration took over, I've noticed there's more stability. And the work that we changed in the traffic department worked. The traffic is flowing better. These turns, these right turns at these intersections are improving traffic flow. And we need them all over town. So these are the things that motivate me for the bonds. But right now, the mayor is right. We need to tighten our belt and look, and the council is right, and look at what costs we can cut right now. We are not where we were when we all thought the bonds were going to be a great thing. We all know y'all want to spend the money to help Laredo. That's known, and I trust you all. And the past is the past. I have not seen, what I saw, a million dollars' worth of concrete poured along Santa Maria, next to a railroad. I told the city manager that on the first day on the job. We can't be doing these kind of things. Nobody uses it. Total waste of money. So going through and trying to figure out how to save money is a great thing, but we are not going to be successful as a city. I didn't realize we were $947 million in debt already. We have another $417 million coming on top of that. We're going to be working up there around a billion and a half. Right now, the stock market, bonds are high. Things are not in sync at all. And I can say, well, now's not the time to buy the bonds. Well, it's written generally enough where they don't have to go out and buy them right now. So they can save those for answers. Those answers aren't going to, aren't going to help us in Laredo. I am actually now going to vote against the bonds. And I ask you all to consider yourselves what we're doing as far as our position with this type of burden on our tax base. Now, I watched the program on KGS. Alt-Gilt had points, Pete Sein's had points. A tears is not the answer. We need to have our own money, and it needs to be sound and not in a debt situation. I know I've gone over the three minutes, but I'm actually worried about it. I just, I saw it was $100,000 to have the election. Even I said, well, we better go ahead and have it. I mean, who wants to throw $100,000 out the window? So we're kind of stuck where we are. But I'm asking yourselves privately and your families, consider the debt burden you're going to be putting on the city of Laredo. 974 plus 417. And the bridge driven in, none of that'll ever get to pay this debt. We're going to have to pay it ourselves. And the businesses, these commercial developments, their taxes are going to be sky-high. We're not helping. I want to do bonds, but not right now. And unfortunately, we're stuck on the ballot. Today was the first day for the votes. So I wanted to come down here and express my concerns, but I don't think there's anything we can do about it. The wheel's already turning, so it's going to actually end up being up to the voters. And if this fails, it doesn't mean we, if it passes or fails, it appears we could slow this down if it passes. But I'm hoping it doesn't, because we will immediately start spending the money. Regardless of what we say right now to the voters, if we get the money and we sell the bonds, you'll start spending the money. So I'm for that, just not right now. We are not in a safe economic spot to be borrowing, putting up $400 million. And that's a fact. So we'll see, we'll see what hindsight has for us. And I want to go one more. When we have these, get out a calendar of the economy and get out a calendar of how we got in debt and compare the two. And in the future, people are going to be able to say, my God, they borrowed $400 when the sky was falling. So think about that, because that judgment can happen to us. But thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Ryan Natividad.
Good evening, City Council. My name's Ryan Natividad, and I'm a citizen of Laredo. First off, I want to thank the, this is regarding Vision Zero. First off, I wanted to thank the thorough, hard-working team that put together this Vision Zero plan. They created a strong list of high-profile items that we can begin to implement immediately to save lives. These guidelines could be a strong starting point that builds a culture and system of safety that we need to implement at every level, with every new road standard redesign, every new maintenance project, and every new roadway project. And I wanted to bring up something that has been underlying any of the discussion regarding Vision Zero. Laredo, as it stands, is an auto-oriented, driver-prioritized culture that puts the convenience of drivers over the well-being of people. There always seems to be more money to build more wide, dangerous roadways, which encourage unsafe speeding, but rarely enough resources for even the simplest of safe pedestrian infrastructure. In our discussion during this process, truly safe walking and biking infrastructure are talked about as a luxury and an afterthought, only if we can get federal grants. Our wide, expensive, high-speed roadways are harming and killing pedestrians, cyclists, as well as people inside of vehicles. It is clearly stated in the Vision Zero report that speeding is among the most important causes that are killing people in crashes, most especially pedestrians and cyclists. A truth we must come face-to-face with if we mean our Vision Zero commitments is that we will need to prioritize the lives of people over the speed and convenience of drivers. This means traffic calming and committing to taking continued actions towards developing safe streets for all, as outlined not only in Vision Zero, but also in our Viva Laredo Comp Plan, which has been formally adopted by this city. Do we truly value the lives and dignity of all our citizens, or only those that can afford to protect themselves inside of a car? If we get it right, which we can do, it will be evident in meaningfully lower numbers of injury and death in the narrowing of vehicle lanes to traffic calm driving speeds, in safe pedestrian crossings throughout the city, and in the widespread implementation of protected bike routes throughout our community. This is the type of commitment we need to get us to our 2040 Vision Zero goals. Vision Zero cannot be a self-congratulatory lip service or a one-time set of projects. It will need to be a long-term pledge to prioritize the safety of all Laredonans, including those outside of the protection of an automobile. When 2040 comes, we can either look back at this moment as the beginning of a triumphant leadership shift, which I hope we will, or an embarrassing monument to our inability to protect the lives and dignity of Laredonans. Every death is someone's parent, child, or grandparent. The next death, the traffic violence, could be someone you love. Thank you.
Thank you. Tricia Cortez.
Does she want to speak now, or on the other?
Do you want to speak now, or you want to wait for the item?
It's coming up.
All right, do you want to speak now, or? All right.
It's for item 57E1.
E1, yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, and thank you, Councilmember Vanessa Perez for sponsoring this item, and Mayor and Councilmembers Gonzalez and Rangel for co-sponsoring this really important item. What I'm going to try to do with this presentation is just give you a very brief refresher on ethylene oxide and the Clean Air Study in light of the TCEQ study, and also to update you on the National Academies of Science. They gave a report in March of this year on TCEQ's cancer risk assessment, and their findings were pretty scathing. So I just want to quickly, just as a refresher, what is ETO? Toxic colorless gas, chronic exposure, has been linked to these cancer types, breath effects, respiratory harm, and these damages. It is a small, lightweight molecule, travels long distances in the air, and it takes months to break down in the air. It has a half-life in the air of two to five months in the body. It's breathed in is where it causes the most harm, and then it enters the bloodstream. And the same properties that make ethylene oxide such an effective sterilizer also make it dangerous to human health. It's highly mutagenic, and it can't tell the difference between human cells and bacteria. And so in terms of understanding sort of the regulatory framework in the country of ETO as a carcinogenic air toxic, the EPA regulates 188 hazardous air pollutants, or HAPs. And the way that it works is the EPA sets emissions limits for each polluting facility, like Midwest here in Laredo. And the EPA is required under the Clean Air Act to review these regulations every eight years. And the way that it works for these air toxics is that the EPA sets an acceptable cancer threshold for carcinogens of one case of cancer for every 10,000. These are extra cancers associated with these air toxics. And when you take the 1 in 10,000, because the EPA sets a toxicity level for these air toxics, like ethylene oxide, ETO is extremely, extremely, has a very, very high, amongst the highest of the 188, of a toxicity level. And so if you were to translate, what does 1 in 10,000 look like in Laredo for ethylene oxide emissions? You're talking about 11 parts per trillion. It's tiny. It would be like having a penny in a bank account with $11 billion. That's how tiny this molecule is of what's considered acceptable in the air. So may I continue?
Yes, go ahead, continue.
Okay, sorry, Mayor, thank you. Just a brief refresher. So Midwest opened here in Laredo in '05. It's ranked among the highest emitters of ETO, among nearly 90 commercial sterilizers in the country. 2019, for example, it ranked second nationally among all facilities, emitting nearly 16,400 pounds into the air. That's all self-reported data to the EPA. And in 2022, EPA placed Midwest Laredo on its list of 23 high-risk ETO sterilizer facilities due to that unacceptable cancer risk rate.
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. Cortez, I just want to interrupt a little bit. So the 11 trillion, trillion parts is per cubic liter of air. 11 parts, yes. 11 parts per trillion of ETO per cubic liter of air. Just so we have an understanding of what 11 parts per trillion means. Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, so in terms of, just a reminder about the, you know, the fence line study that we did. It was driven, and Councilmember Perez has been a key part of this coalition from day one, back when it started in 2021. And there were community concerns about really the limited understanding that we had of what were these emissions levels in the air like in Laredo, since everything, previously, everything is self-reported, and it's done by an equation, like just pen to paper. So we really wanted to get a better understanding. So this took place over the course of seven weeks in the fall of 2023. There were 14 total sites, six primary and one background, and then there were six alternates and one alternate background. Most of the primaries were done within a one-mile radius of Midwest, and then the primaries were about seven to eight miles away. The third-party contractor was Dallas-based Bayer, and they collected samples in a method that was consistent with EPA best practices, and EPA approved the QAPP for this. Dr. Pelchier was out of UMass Amherst, was the third-party external reviewer of that data. And the funding support for this seven-week study came from the city, Webb County, UISD, and LISD. And this is kind of what those canisters look like, like these kind of like tea kettles or so, if you know. And this is where most of them were placed. And so the key things to understand about this study is that there were concentrations as high as 23 parts per billion, which translates to 23,000 parts per trillion. And you already know that the acceptable cancer risk that the EPA has set is 11 parts per trillion. So it's very high in Laredo. And the background average with the canisters were about 50 parts per trillion. Canister one, about 5,000 to 6,000 parts per trillion. Canister six, 200 to 250 parts per trillion. And distance and wind direction matters with this. Okay, I think it's stuck, sorry. Okay. And, you know, there's just a comparison. How did Laredo's fence line air monitoring compare to other fence line studies around commercial sterilizers in Atlanta and around Chicago? And you'll see on the left, it's high. So the conclusions of that study was that there are elevated concentrations found at the fence line around Midwest and extending a significant distance from that fence line, much higher than the urban background. And even though concerns are relatively recent, ETO has always been a potent carcinogen. And it's unclear what specific industrial activity at Midwest is driving these significant levels of emissions, and more data is required. And I'm just going to leave this in the slide, and I'll leave this PowerPoint with you all, so you all can look at it later. But the concern focuses on 2016, right? That's when it was determined that ETO is a class-one carcinogen, and it is carcinogenic to humans. And the EPA, just so you know, they were required to update the sterilizer rule in 2014. Remember, they need to update every eight years, but the EPA hadn't done it. They hadn't updated that rule since 1994. And so in 2022, Risk and others sued the EPA over its failure to update that rule. We settled the case in the spring of 2023, and then EPA was on a deadline to revise the sterilizer rule by March of 2024. And just so you're aware, what does that new rule require? And I have two slides on that. One of them is that all facilities using more than 100 pounds of ETO, and of course, Midwest sterilizer uses more than 1 million pounds of ETO a year, they must use continuous emissions monitoring systems. They have to do this. They have to record hourly averages of ETO concentration. They have to comply with these things and install a permanent total enclosure system to control these emissions. Midwest has to do these three things to be compliant with that new rule by next spring. They have to do the total enclosure system, continuous air monitoring system within the facility, and have new emission control devices. So what is very important, given all the national developments with the new administration, is that the President has announced that any facility under the Clean Air Act that does not want to comply with the new rule can be exempted from the rules due to national security. We've seen that recently applied to the border and with the tariffs, et cetera. Commercial sterilizers were specifically ruled out. To get that presidential exception, a facility had to apply by March thirty-first. So the question that I hope, the Mayor, Mayor, I hope you and the Council can ask Midwest is, did Midwest submit an exemption from complying with the new rule? And lastly, I want to conclude these last two slides with the March twenty twenty-five. TCEQ had come up with a different cancer risk assessment than the EPA. Theirs was much lower, and we're saying it's not that severe. And they asked, they asked the National Academies of Science, that you can't get any higher, that's like the platinum standard in the United States, to review their methodologies. And the National Academies of Science accepted, and they put together a group of independent scientists to study this. And so it was scathing, this report, and they found that their methodology was insufficient, inaccurate, incomplete, lacking in sound science. They gave a list of recommendations, and they listed why it was lacking in sound science. And they also found that their risk assessment failed to capture the risk that ETO poses to communities, communities like ours. And I can send y'all a copy of the report, but just here's a quote that says, "While TCEQ used human epidemiologic data in their dose-response assessment, it has some merits. The report raises significant concerns regarding the overall methodology. The lack of application of systematic review methods, the exclusion of critical epidemiological data, the limitations in the modeling approach, and use of unpublished validation data all contribute to a lack of confidence in TCEQ's risk assessment of ethylene oxide. These methodological deviations underscore the need for a more rigorous and comprehensive approach in future assessments." And with that, I thank you, Mayor, for extending the time, and I thank the Councilmembers, and you, Councilmember Bettis, for staying on top of this, and we must, given what a public health threat this facility poses to our community.
Mayor.
Thank you very much. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to thank you for coming out here. I know you had to leave, so she gave us the rundown. Later, we're gonna hear on the item from the Health Department. It is concerning that the results we get from one agency contradict other results, and so thank you for setting us up for that, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now I'd like to ask Dr. Chamberlain if he can give us a comment, because we've been working with TCEQ on the mobile testing, if you can come down.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Point of order, we're not on that item yet, this is only public comment. If we want to bring Dr. Chamberlain up, we need to bring up the actual item number. Would you like me to do that, Mayor? Motion to bring the item?
Bring a motion.
Motion to bring up, what number was it, Mayor? C, E one?
C one.
Fifty-seven E one.
Right, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Dr. Chamberlain.
Uh, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Read it. The special possible action on the TCEQ air monitoring report with a comparison to the local report and update on ethylene oxide efforts and any other matters incident there, too. Ms. Cortez just kind of gave us a very quick summary on the efforts by the Clean Air Coalition and group that has been trying to kind of figure out this ethylene oxide situation. There was a report that came out by TCEQ. I think Dr. Chamberlain has the data on that, which does, to me, from my understanding, seems to contradict what we had observed through the observations that Ms. Cortez explained. But I just want the public, public has asked, you know, where are we with ethylene oxide? Where are we with this situation? And so wanted to put this for the public to kind of hear about this report in a very simplified version, if you can.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Dr. Chamberlain.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council. Dr. Richard Chamberlain, your Public Health Director. I would like to go ahead and begin this update of air quality and specifically in the realm of ethylene oxide. And just as a disclaimer, the information presented is based on independent reports by TCEQ, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, US Environmental Public Protection Agency, and the Rio Grande International Study Center. These studies were not conducted by the Laredo Public Health. At this time, the department does not have the in-house air quality analysis, expertise, or specialized equipment independently verifying these findings. This summary is meant to inform and provide context. We rely on the original agencies and experts to explain the results and take any action, any needed action. And so with that, I wanted to provide you just a little definition of ethylene oxide, which Ms. Tricia just graciously provided us right now. So I'll just read the first line. "ETO is a colorless gas used in, used to sterilize heat and moisture-sensitive medical equipment, including surgical instruments, catheters, and plastic devices. And the health concern is ethylene oxide is classified as a human carcinogen by US EPA and the International Agency on Research on Cancer." And so regarding Laredo air quality ETO assessments, three separate studies measured ethylene oxide, ETO, in the air around a sterilization facility in Laredo, Midwest. They found higher levels of ETO near the facility and lower levels farther away. These assessments help us better understand where ETO is present and how wind and distance affect its movement in the air. So just to recap and review, the TCEQ air quality ETO monitoring assessment was conducted September seventeenth through the nineteenth of twenty twenty-four. What did they do? TCEQ used two vans with high-tech equipment to drive and park around the Midwest sterilization plant and nearby neighborhoods to test the air for a chemical called ethylene oxide. This chemical is used to sterilize medical equipment, but can be harmful at high levels over long periods. What did they find? The highest levels of ethylene oxide were found near the plant, especially early in the mornings. Even the highest readings, which was thirty-nine parts per billion, were below considered a dangerous for short-term exposure. In neighborhoods, ethylene oxide were very low or too small to measure accurately. Their equipment detected short bursts of the chemical near the plant, but nothing that suggested an immediate health risk. EPA's air quality ETO monitoring assessment was conducted September ninth, twenty twenty-three to January seventh, twenty twenty-four. What did they do? EPA placed air sampling canisters in five locations across Laredo, including right near the sterilization plant and further away. These canisters collected air samples every three days for about four months. What did they find? ETO levels were highest closest to the plant, as expected. Within a mile, the chemical levels dropped to the same as normal background air in cities, background air in cities without known ETO sources. And the highest twenty-four-hour reading was about seven point eight parts per billion, still far below the EPA's action limit.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Dr. Chamberlain, can you go back to that slide, please?
Yes.
What did they find on that second bulletin, within a mile? How far in within a mile would you say?
I would have to reflect back to the math to be able to provide that guidance, and I'm able to provide that to the Council if necessary to review that map. But within the month.
It just could be, it just could be an enormous difference, right? A mile is typically sixteen blocks. So if you're talking three blocks, two blocks, you know, compared to fifteen blocks, that's a big difference.
Absolutely.
So I think, I think that's really important for us to find out. Just because that just caught my eye, when they said within a mile, that'd become typically normal air, right? That other cities don't deal with ethylene oxide.
According to the report, yes, sir.
And the meeting you all had with TCEQ in January, their report was that they were in compliance as far as the state is concerned, or no?
According to the TCEQ report, they are in compliance.
And the report that, that the canisters are out there with risk compared to TCEQ's report, are they that different? I just want you to say it in black and white, yes and no, so the public understands exactly what's going on.
I do have key takeaways from all of the assessments, and ultimately, we are going to see a higher level of concentration immediately around the facility, which is concerning for the people who work around the facility. It, it's a public health concern.
Immediately around, how many feet would you say approximately, or is there an approximation there?
I would not be able to give you that approximation.
Did they give you that, or you just don't have it with you, or they did not?
They did not.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to kind of add some to, and I could be mistaken, but if I remember correctly, one of the canisters was placed by the Villa San Agustin neighborhood, by the, on the way to the World Trade Bridge, by the fire station on the Loop and Mines, and that was considered background. There was another canister placed further north. There was one in Green Ranch neighborhood. And then there were quite a few of them positioned within three blocks to five blocks of the actual plant, which is where the most alarming quantities were noticed. So that's where we got from the sampling, and I believe that the EPA one supported that. I don't know if the TCEQ one also shows that, because the summary talks about beyond the immediate, but within the immediate, it doesn't seem to say that there were alarming amounts. Is that accurate, or there were alarming amounts?
There were levels of concern immediately around the facility from TCEQ's data.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead.
So I, oh, sorry, I just wanted to clarify that the, when you say thirty-nine parts per billion, and yet the standard that EPA has put forth is eleven parts per trillion, we're talking about thirty-nine thousand parts per trillion?
Yes.
Yes.
And so that would be the TCEQ studies, the levels they found. And then EPA, the seven point eight parts per billion, translates to seven thousand eight hundred parts per trillion. Is that accurate?
Correct.
So when we talk, I know TCEQ, the issue with TCEQ is what Ms. Cortez was describing, right? Their levels, just their risk assessment has a much lower standard for acceptable ETO emissions, or much higher, I guess, is acceptable, right? Much higher ETO levels are acceptable according to the TCEQ, and that's why Ms. Cortez brought forth the National Academy of Sciences study that found their assessment really doesn't, isn't scientifically sound, in their opinion. So National Academy of Sciences. And so if we accept the EPA standard of eleven parts per trillion, that, that has been accepted by every other state except for the state of Texas, then it is seventy-eight hundred, or seven thousand eight hundred parts per trillion that EPA found, that is of concern. Because we're using the standard of eleven parts per trillion in a facility that uses one point two million pounds of ethylene oxide every single year. And their application in front of the state of Texas was to expand that capacity even farther, potentially doubling it, although I can't say whether the company has moved forward to do that. I just wanted to clear.
Dr. Chamberlain, did you have any other comments?
I just wanted to.
Hold on, hold on, please. Dr. Chamberlain was.
I still have a couple of slides just to review the key takeaways and just on the Rio Grande International Study Air Quality ETO Monitoring. What did they find? The highest concentrations of ETO are up to twenty-three parts per billion or from close to the facility, especially downwind, ETO decreased with distance, but still detectable more than a mile away. In some cases, wind direction and time of day mattered. Levels tended to be higher overnight and lower in the afternoon. The strongly, the study strongly suggests that Midwest is the main source of ETO in the area. And so the key takeaways here is that the highest levels were found closest to the Midwest sterilization facility, and that the levels dropped the farther away the tests were done. In the Rio Grande International Study Center, ETO levels went as high as twenty-three parts per billion at locations about three hundred meters from the plant. The TCEQ report showed ETO levels reaching up to thirty-eight point eight four parts per billion near the plant. In nearby neighborhoods, the levels were mostly low to measure. The EPA's study recorded up to seven point seven eight parts per billion near the plant, which is much lower levels in the area farther away. All three studies show similar patterns. The closer the sample was to the plant, the higher the level of ETO. Background or faraway areas had low or barely detectable amounts. Wind played a role in where ETO showed up. Higher levels were often found in areas downwind from the plant during testing. The Rio Grande International Study Support Report also found that ETO levels were often higher overnight and lower during the day, which is common with air pollution due to the change in how air moves at different times. Each study used different tools and sampling schedules while Rio Grande International Study Center and EPA collected long-term air samples and found similar patterns near the facility. TCEQ used short-term mobile testing and also detected higher ETO levels near the site.
All right, okay. Ms. Cortez.
Mayor.
Did you, did you have a further comment?
Just to add to what Dr. Chamberlain was saying is, is that the TCEQ instrumentation couldn't read below a certain level. So they were very limited into how low they could measure concentrations. And that's kind of the difficulty with ETO to begin with. And the other thing I just wanted to add is that the background canisters were about seven or eight miles away, and those were all above the eleven parts per trillion readings. So it's, it's, while it reduces as you get further away, of course, it's still present above the acceptable cancer risk levels that the EPA has set for ETO.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I do want to add that, you know, when we first learned about this problem, health problem for the community, we, you know, immediately mobilized and tried to get on top, stay on top of this. Before this, TCEQ had told us that they don't even monitor for this. Neither does, neither did EPA. So just the fact that they're even monitoring for it at all shows that there's some, like, efforts to kind of, I guess, get a better understanding of this. Problem is that a lot of people in the meanwhile are breathing this in and getting sick, and that's unfortunate in our community that this is happening. I would, Mayor, like to make a motion for the Council to send a formal inquiry to Midwest Sterilization and ask them if they did apply for that exemption or not, so we can get that answer and we can use that in our assessment.
All right, second for discussion.
Please, Mayor, a comment? Dr. Chamberlain, questions? Does Midwest, are they in compliance right now as far as TCEQ is concerned?
From the meeting that we did have recently, they stated they are in compliance with the data that they are being provided.
And TCEQ is what we accept as normal here in the state of Texas. That's what we, we adopt.
That is the statutes that we follow in the state of Texas.
Right now, correct.
Yes, sir.
And as far as EPA standards, till when does Midwest have till they can come into compliance with EPA standards?
March of twenty twenty-six.
And do you see that coming to suit, coming, coming?
It has been, it has been shared that Midwest is working towards that compliance.
Do you know what they're investing as far as monies are concerned to try to, of course, curtail the EO that's being emitted out now?
I couldn't provide you that answer, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mayor.
Another question? Go ahead.
Yours?
Who's first?
Oh, I just want to say that I'd like to amend my motion to include an inquiry on what Councilmember Gutierrez was asking on what their efforts have been to comply with the rules so far, and whether or not they're going to ask for that exemption.
I'd accept that amendment.
Motion, that's accepted.
I think, right, before we do anything like that, we, obviously, we're going into a private company, and we may, we better make sure that we have all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted in terms of what other standards are available. I'll ask this question right now. If you can combine the OSHA standards for air quality and working conditions would be probably better suited because of all the indoor air quality inside the building. These are people that are citizens of Laredo that are working in there, and it might be a better angle for you to get in there.
All right.
So one thing that the EPA has not addressed are the emissions coming from warehouses. So we know in our community that we have warehouses everywhere, and the product and the amount that comes from Midwest is, if they're using one point two million pounds, they are sterilizing a tremendous amount of product. Now, the company shared, not very, they didn't outline how, how much of their product remains warehouse, but they did share that FedEx is the carrier for their product as they distribute to the rest of the country. But the assumption is that products sit somewhere until it is hauled off to and distributed to around the country. What we do not have a clear idea is where it sits, because it is continuing to emit ethylene oxide for weeks to months. And that means that people in a warehouse that is not with, what do they call the, the negative pressure? negative pressure to control those admissions, in a facility that does not have ways to clean that air, they are being exposed to ethylene oxide without their knowledge. So I think it's incredibly important that while we're doing our due diligence in asking Midwest the the protocols they're putting in place to meet the new stricter standards with the product that they are producing, we also need to find out about the product that they are storing and where, who's being exposed.
Where?
And I would like to ask, excuse me, I almost done. I would like to ask if we can include that request in in our requests to Midwest? That that we ask, thank you, that we ask them to describe their um their protocols for storing this product, how long it is stored, and where it is stored.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, do you mind, I'll just make an amendment to add into or to your, to your motions, uh, Gutierrez. I'll just, I'll just. Alright.
Mayor, I'll I'll next to comment.
I'd accept the amendment.
Motion is amended second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Chamberlain, or did you have any other comments?
I have none, none unless the council has any additional questions. I did just want to also mention that we are um in the process of formally kicking off our air quality monitoring program. Thank you to the Laredo City Council, and of course, the mayor for helping sponsor this last year. And we are bringing um a PhD level of expertise to the city of Laredo in the air quality realm. That will be part of Laredo Public Health. Um, she'll be here at the end of uh May, and the ETO component is a component of our air quality monitoring program. I'm just reminding the council that it is quite expensive, but we'll be bringing that to you all's attention during the budget process as well.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor, just a-
Ms. Cortez, did you have another comment?
Yes, and thank you so much to uh Councilmember Garza's point. When the, when the new rule came out in twenty twenty-four, it noted that people who work in commercial sterilizers, they have a one in seventeen chance of of of, that's their cancer risk level. And you know the, it's one in ten thousand, but if you work there, all the long-term studies show you have a one in seventeen chance. And then to Councilmember Sigarroa's point, um, other studies have shown that the off-gassing is a major component of emissions, and that was a loophole in the twenty twenty-four rule that came out that we were hoping could get tightened up. And uh, lastly, to your point, Councilmember Fettis, is that to have three studies, as she said, done is a testament to the commitment that you have in this city to this community that has been unaware of of what has been happening for such a long time. And so we thank you, and we thank you for being so supportive, and this is the one issue where all these anchor institutions have come together, and so we're very grateful uh for your commitment to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have one more citizen's comments.
We have uh one more citizen's comments. Do we need to go back?
Martin Castro.
No, sir.
Alright, alright, Martin Castro.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Martin Castro, and I serve as the Watershed Science Director for the Rio Grande International Study Center. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you briefly tonight. I'm here to share some major news uh that directly affects our community. Last week, American Rivers officially named the Laredo Grande as one of America's most endangered rivers of twenty twenty-five, ranking it number five on this year's national list. This designation is is not just symbolic, but it is really a national call to action that brings urgent attention to the water scarcity, outdated infrastructure, harmful border policies, and lack of investment that threaten the future of the river that provides a hundred percent of Laredo's drinking water. Uh, for the first time, Laredo and South Texas, more broadly, uh, is in the national spotlight when it comes to water security, and we have a chance to use this moment to advocate for real lasting investment in infrastructure, restoration, and bi-national cooperation. It's also a timely affirmation of the work already underway locally to address these issues. For example, through our Las Palmas Restoration Project, we are reforesting ecologically sensitive riverfront areas right here in Laredo and enhancing water quality along the river. And through a feasibility study that is being conducted in partnership with the city and NatBank, we're examining long-term solutions to upgrade our city's wastewater infrastructure and rethink how uh to make our community and the river more resilient to drought and climate change. So to give you a very brief sense of the campaign, I have, I wanna share a very short ninety-second video that was produced by American Rivers that captures the heart of this effort and the story about Rio Grande. Give me just a moment. The Laredo Grande is more than a river. It is the lifeblood of South Texas, supplying drinking water to millions from Del Rio to the Gulf. The river is also a haven for wildlife, home to migratory birds, pollinators, and aquatic species that depend on its waters for survival. But today, the Laredo Grande is in crisis. A human-induced mega drought, outdated water management, and lack of investment have pushed this river to the brink. Less than one-fifth of its flows now reach the Gulf. The recent Minute Three Three One Agreement created the first-of-its-kind bi-national environmental working group to coordinate conservation efforts. But ongoing dam infrastructure issues, critically low reservoir levels, and underfunded conservation efforts show that policy alone is not enough. Funding is critical. We must act now to save the Laredo Grande. Our drinking water, wildlife, and communities depend on it. The federal government must prioritize funding for conservation, water security, and infrastructure repairs. Without investment, this river and the millions who depend on it face an uncertain future. This is. So, with, uh, in summary, councilmembers, I wanna just thank you for your time and your continued leadership. Uh, we look forward to working with the city of Laredo to build this momentum and protect the river that gives life to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna proceed to item number five. And uh, we included number, item number forty-eight, the Aiken Gump Lobbyist Group. I'd like them to give a presentation.
That's the motion, Mayor?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Both, motion pass.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Karen Cobalruvia, City Manager's Office, for the record. Um, I'm here today uh with our lobbyists at the state and federal level. We have uh McWilliams, McWilliams from our state lobbying firm in Austin, and we have our consultant from DC from um Aiken Gump here with us as well. Um, most of you all came with us to either both Austin or DC or at least one of our trips, and we really see those trips as a culmination of um the city's legislative strategy, which has shifted um over the past few years, and and it continues to shift. And we're really trying to create a broader strategy that just, that showcases what Laredo needs as a city and what our our community needs in general, incorporating um other stakeholders in in the community as well. And so what we're trying to see is these trips as a culmination of the work that we do throughout the year, that our department heads, that some of you um do, not just in in visits, but in letters of support and conversations you have with our representatives at both levels. And as you saw with our legislative agendas, we really have three key almost tracks that we focus on uh based on what the city needs. We have infrastructure, trade, and economic growth, which are especially important at the federal level right now. Uh, public safety, uh, border operations and health programs, and sustainability and housing workforce. And so all of these different kind of tracks, as you can say, um, are important to you all, to our agencies, and to funding for the city. Um, with these things, we um, we have, we're able to provide better health services, have a better border region, and invest in the future of our city. Um, over the past few years, we have tried to strengthen our advocacy, and so that means more coordination between our departments, um, more coordination with you all, and more legislative involvement throughout the year. But we recognize that there's always room for improvement. We heard from some of you during these trips and after and throughout the year, and so our goal is to ensure that we are also better prepared for you all and with our staff as we go into these meetings, because, I mean, you guys are there, and some of them happen very quickly, and and information comes through, and so we just wanna make sure that you um, that you feel ready when you go in there and advocate for us um as our elected officials. So, uh, creating clear brief briefing materials and defining roles of everyone in the meetings um that we schedule. One uh piece of feedback that we received from some of you is that there are a lot of people in these these meetings making it harder to define whose role is what uh when we go in there. So that's something that um as a team, we're working together to do. Um, but we do wanna be well-prepared to maximize every opportunity that is, that comes to us. Um, how can we work together to do this? Your role as councilmembers is there every part of the way, and it is integral that you participate in advocacy efforts and the conversations and policy. That's why we encourage you all to continue coming on these trips and participate as we continue um additional fly-ins throughout the year with our staff and internal teams of pre- preparing agency briefing materials and building grant documents when we submit funding. We have um stakeholders such as the Chamber and LEDC who come together with us and add an industry voice and partner on policy issues that are also relevant to us to show um agencies and officials that um, that there, it is not just the city that is interested in certain topics, but as a, as a community, we are all involved. So like I said, uh, we're learning from the feedback that we that we receive from you all, and will continue to um update our approach as we do these fly-ins and continue updating our um, our legislative advocacy throughout the year. Um, but at, because our trips uh just come uh completed and both sessions, uh, both legislatures are in session, we do have both teams here to give you a little bit of background as to what's happened since our visit and what's going on that we should be looking out as a city. Um, as especially the state session right now that is going on, what we should be looking out for. So, uh, I will let Aiken go first.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protan, and councilmembers. I'm Hans Rikoff. I'm a partner at Aiken Gump. I'm with two of my colleagues as well. We are a small representation of your team in Washington DC. We have the largest team in Washington DC. There's about sixty of us that take the full leap to actually register to lobby. We have about a thousand professionals and lawyers across Washington DC, Texas, and the globe, and there's a real distinction to work on behalf of the city on your federal objectives. Before we get started, I'm gonna give an opportunity uh to my colleagues to introduce themselves.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here. Uh, it's my first time in Laredo, so grateful to work with all of you, grateful to work with the city. Sam Elswanger, I know I've met most of you. Um, I've been at Aiken for twelve years. Uh, today, thank you, Karen. Um, really got to see a lot of the the spots in around the city that we've worked on over the years. World Trade Bridge, Gateway Health Center, um, Water Treatment Plant. It was, it was really very fascinating and eye-opening to see some of the work that we've been a part of and grateful for the opportunity to be here and to speak with you all tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council. My name is Hossor Juan. I've been at Aiken Gump for four years. Prior to that, I worked for Congressman Henry Cuellar. I'm a fellow Texan. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to present before you all today. And thank each and every one of you uh for visiting Washington time and time again to advocate on behalf of the city and in favor of the people of Laredo. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So what we wanna do today, as Karen indicated, is talk a little bit about what's happening in Washington DC, what some of our work streams are on behalf of the city. I should mention as well, I'm also a Texan. I've been visiting Washington DC for the past twenty-five years. At some point, my wife and I will return back to Texas. And as Sam said, it really was a a privilege uh uh to have your hospitality today and see some of those um sites that we've been working on in Washington DC. We wanna talk about what's happening from a funding perspective. We wanna talk about the new administration, what that means for the city, um, what it means with the new majority in the Senate, and what the House, the Senate, and the administration are all working towards. But before we do that, we wanna make sure that the council kind of understands um how our efforts on behalf of the city at the federal level work and operate. What we typically do is, obviously, we appreciate the time and effort that you guys take to come to Washington DC. It is very worthwhile. We know you all have day jobs and other responsibilities, and it is an important part of that federal advocacy, but it does not end there. Your advocacy extends throughout the entire year. Unlike the Texas session, Washington DC is always in session, except when they're on recess. Um, what we do with the city to maintain that constant communication is, we have a regular call uh every two weeks uh with council or with management, and anyone from council that would like to join. In addition to that, we have separate calls as needed. Um, every week, we compile all the grant notices that may be relevant to the city and help the city navigate that process. We provide a monthly report every month to the city. Uh, we help, as we mentioned, coordinate the city's uh annual visit to Washington DC. And let me just tell you, that visit uh produces so much goodwill on behalf of the city. It really is important. I've never seen a city have the majority leader from both the Republican Party in the House and the majority leader in the Democratic uh Party come to the same event uh for Laredo Day. It is really impressive. You guys do a fantastic job and really appreciate, again, those efforts. One of the other things we do is we help the city draft legislation at the federal level and work with your delegation, the two senators and Congressman Cuellar, all of which have been constant champions on behalf of a number of your issues. Um, we also work as we look for funding opportunities to draft support letters and work with that delegation to have support letters for those funding opportunities. We also provide real-time updates. One of the things we're doing on behalf of the city and other stakeholders is we have a new administration, and this administration is very active, especially at the executive level. We have an executive action tracker that is updated in real time, which provides the council, the city, and management on any activity that the executive branch is doing that may impact the city. And there's a lot happening in Washington DC that impacts the city at the executive branch level. And then obviously, we keep you guys up to date on all the nomination status. Um, the changes with senior officials of the agencies are important, and a number of other initiatives. So, in terms of funding, I'm gonna let Sam, my colleague, talk a little bit about what's happening in Washington DC and what that means for you.
So, uh, the end of December uh twenty twenty-four, Congress passed a short-term continuing resolution. So there had been a larger package that uh some of you may have read in the news. Elon Musk blew up, had a whole bunch of other things in it. Um, what ended up passing was a three-month CR to fund the government at the current levels, and the additional items in that package were really focused on hurricane, hurricane disaster relief. We were successful in getting twenty million dollars for water infrastructure in Laredo, and it was a, an effort that was one, awesome to work on. It was great to work with Congressman Cuellar's office there on this, and with Senator Cruz and Senator Cornyn. And I will note Senator Cruz, who does not typically do much in the appropriation space. They weighed in with committee in support of this, and this was funding that was really rare given the the size and scope of this package and the focus on specific disaster relief. And at the time, the city, this, there was not a federal disaster declaration. That did not come until months later. There had been a state one. So to be able to get that funding when there was no federal disaster declaration was really a great feat. There was support from not only Congressman Cuellar, but bipartisan support from other members of the Texas delegation that signed the letter. Um, and so, you know, that was uh one of our most recent successes for the city. Uh, in March, uh, President Trump signed a full-year continuing resolution, so we are operating under FY twenty-four levels uh through the end of the fiscal year. And so that means that um we, no community projects were funded, and we're just, you know, unfortunately, the status quo. So right now, we are working with the city on community projects and appropriations requests as they start to work on FY twenty-six. Um, that will be a long haul. Um, President's budget typically comes out in February. President's budget is not expected detailed budget until late May. Um, so it will take some time, but, and rarely does Congress ever actually finish and fund the government by the September thirtieth deadline, and this year will not be any exception to that. Um, but we are in the process of pulling everything together and getting the community projects submitted to Congressman Cuellar. Unfortunately, the senator- Unfortunately, the senators do not do congression-directed spending, which is the Senate equivalent of a community project. Um, so the one thing I will note though, as we are operating under current levels, it does maintain programmatic funding. So for example, there has been funding year over year to mitigate the impact of Carrizo Kane. That's just one of the examples of, of programmatic funds that have been maintained, that have gotten the support from both Senator Cornyn and Congressman Cuellar. Um, as you know, we were, we worked very closely with Congressman Cuellar, Senator Cruz on the presidential permit for the World Trade Bridge. And as we were drafting these slides, we got the good news that for the Columbia Solidarity Bridge, that the State Department had submitted its favorable recommendation to the White House for the presidential permit. Um, it has been, uh, for those that were, were in that meeting at the State Department, it was, um, an interesting, uh, meeting and I will also highlight the importance of the in-person trip because I do not believe that it was a coincidence that the application itself was deemed complete the day before our meeting with the State Department. So it really underscores the importance of that trip, of in-person meetings and the constant follow-up that we have had since and really the relentless champions that you have in your federal delegation. Um, one thing I want to also highlight is upcoming legislative opportunity and that is the current surface transportation authorization is set to expire September thirtieth of next year. And I know that seems like forever away, but they will start working on that here in the near term and it is, uh, very fortunate that the Senate Commerce Committee Chairman is Senator Cruz, it's the Commerce, Science and Transportation Committee. And so we are working with Senator Cruz's office on trying to be creative in addressing some of the formulaic issues that have impacted Laredo's ability to get funding because as you know, most of this funding goes to the state to then give to cities and, and localities. And, uh, you know, so the idea of trying to figure out a way to address these formulas that, you know, would not put us at odds, but will benefit Laredo given its unique position as the largest port in the Western Hemisphere. Um, so we, we do look forward to working on that and look forward to working with all of you, um, on, on so many different initiatives. Turn it over to, to his.
Thank you. I'll address the issue of the border and immigration. As you know, we have a new administration under President Donald Trump and he has resumed the construction of the border wall. There have been some areas of particular focus, including additional funding sought of in the reconciliation package for, uh, border security measures and for, uh, trying to make the border safer as President Trump has signaled. Uh, he's signed a number of executive orders aimed at securing the border and he's rolled back a lot of the Biden-era immigration policies. Uh, in specific, he, uh, has reestablished the remain in Mexico policy and has, uh, paused the CBP One app, which allowed, uh, refugees to enter this country. Uh, we expect that there will be more controversial orders that will come, uh, in the next couple of months and that some of those will be face, uh, litigation in federal courts. Um, in addition to that, you know, we still have three and a half years of the Trump administration. We expect things to evolve on a day-by-day basis regarding the border and immigration and his way of wanting to secure the border. On trade, President Trump has focused heavily on, uh, wanting to, uh, make trade a more fair and balanced approach and making sure that the United States gets its fair share. Uh, he's required a report and recommendations be delivered to him by April first, which is in nine days. And these actions include directs, uh, review of China's unfair trade practices, initiates the review of the joint, of the USMCA, uh, which is up for renegotiation in twenty twenty-six, instructs investigations of economic issues, including US trade deficit, exchange rates and current currency policies of major trading partners and instructs assessment of existing US laws and tools to counter unfair trade practices, including trade remedies, export controls, investment controls, input controls, et cetera. Um, so we'll be, uh, like my coworker Hans was saying, we have this, uh, app or in this, uh, on our website that allows you to follow each and every one of his orders, including everything that he's doing on trade. We have a number of lawyers at the firm that are specifically focusing on the trade issue and his orders on a day-by-day basis and providing real-time updates to our clients, including you all. So we'll continue to follow that process along the way in the months and, and, and days to come as, as they develop.
So budget reconciliation is one other item Congress has to do between now and likely the August recess. And budget reconciliation sounds like something very complicated. Uh, a very simple way of thinking about it is reconciliation means just a simple majority in the Senate. Right now in the Senate, to move any major pieces of legislation, you need sixty votes. Republicans do not have sixty votes, neither do Democrats. So you need bipartisan support to move legislation. Reconciliation is a process that includes a couple of budgetary measures, but by and large it requires only a simple majority. Uh, it's important to mention this from the city's perspective because there's a couple of things that Congress cannot touch in reconciliation, namely they cannot touch Medicare and they cannot touch Social Security. However, in order to pay for a number of the tax, uh, cuts that are set to expire here, uh, at the end of, uh, this year, uh, they are looking for offsets or ways to pay for those and one of those ways is Medicaid. So that's an issue we're following very closely on behalf of the city. There's a big divide right now between where the House is on their budget and where the Senate is on their budget. Both the House and Senate have actually now passed the same budget, um, which was a kind of a start for reconciliation. Again, it is an important process and we were following it. We just wanted the council to be aware of that. Here are a couple of the items that are important to industry in Laredo and happy to go into any more detail here, but this is really focused on industry, uh, industry and individuals, um, aside from that Medicaid component. And then we know you have a state update as well, but we want to make sure we leave time for any questions at the federal level. And again, we really appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you guys today.
All right. Questions?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Question?
No, I actually was just going to say, uh, we have, um, a lot of people waiting, but I, I do, I am interested in some of the budget reconciliation updates and I'm happy to communicate with you through email or text to, to be able to get that.
Happy to set up a call and answer any questions and talk through what's, what's being talked about with reconciliation process.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we'd have to put together a presentation. It, it is, um, a little bit of a weedy issue, but it's an important issue. Um, and I should mention budget reconciliation could also be paired with the debt ceiling. As you remember, debt ceiling, at least during the previous administration, you know, was always a foreshadowing of whether the federal government was going to shut down and for how long. And that also has an impact on the city. Uh, there is likely going to be an effort to consolidate maybe those debt ceiling discussions along with budget reconciliation. It will be a very partisan issue and I'm happy to give you kind of the details on reconciliation. We actually have at our firm, uh, the former chairman of the Ways and Means Committee and he was the last member that successfully negotiated in the House that whole process. And he is also a great resource and certainly volunteer him to, uh, to brief the council and anyone else that might be interested.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. No question?
Yeah, line is more on process than anything else. Um, and I'm not too familiar for it beyond the new pandemic. So I just wanted to find out how we come about the subject matter that you guys discuss or what you're going to go after. Do we have to, uh, line them up with, with items that we are interested in here in Laredo?
Um, so council member, for that, um, every year, at least for the federal side, we adopt a legislative agenda and that's a mix of priorities that come from, from you all, from council, what we hear from you at council meetings, from the community and from our departments. And those are just, some are like, uh, funding opportunities, some are just high-level needs and things that we add are, are for or against. And so that's, I think that was adopted in January and that kind of sets us up for the year. But if there is something that, um, comes up that wasn't originally on that, we are always able to go back to, um, that resolution and amend it to add additional priorities if there is a need. But our agenda is set up in a way to be broad enough that for our needs, we can kind of have discussions on different topics.
One of the concerns that the citizens have with this town is a, the, the annual trip that goes on. Uh, and I don't know, you guys go through that probably in every city that you represent, whether we have measurable results. And, and what I, what I can see right now just on this is it's tremendous. Um, is there a process where by the time we get to, uh, DC, that some of these, uh, for lack of a better word, used to be to, to, by the time we get there to go close the deal? Is that, is that the mindset? Is that the idea behind those, these, these visits?
So it, it really, it depends on the, on the topic and, and the meeting that we're after. For example, I think Sam brought up, um, the visit with the State Department. And so that is something that was ongoing and it just, it worked out really well with the, literally the day before the meeting, the State Department, um, signed off on, on that, on that permit. And so that, we, we really feel that really helped push them to give us an answer that they had been stalling. So sometimes we do have very targeted meetings and others are, uh, questions or funding for programs or others are just relationship building. So it, it really just depends on the need of the exact, um, item that, that we're going because we can have a different answer depending on the, on the topic. Um, but some are to try to seal the deal, like you said, and some aren't.
But also the trip, by the time you take the trip to Washington, there has been multiple meetings behind the scene, working on this issue. And it's kind of like, in some, in some cases, you're closing that deal on that particular issue depending like, like what you said, depending on every issue.
And this was a little bit unique with it being a new administration and a new Senate majority. So it was also a lot of relationship building, laying the groundwork and laying the foundation for work that's to come because this was the very start of the new administration. Uh, I'm sure you all noticed in, in a lot of the meetings that despite the return to work requirements, a lot of those buildings were still very empty because they're still staffing up, there's still appoint, appointments to get confirmed. Have in mind the dozing efforts and some layoffs as well. Um, so a lot of it is also the relationship, laying the groundwork for working with this administration and for working with this new Congress. So, you know, it, it kind of cuts both ways.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And council member, it's a good question because there may be an opportunity for another trip to Washington DC or it may necessitate another trip to DC, not just once a year for a smaller group. So we certainly want to keep the door open for that possibility.
For targeted efforts.
For targeted efforts because we know you've done that in the past and that has also been important because Congress has their own deadlines and they don't always line up with your, uh, visit in March.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a lawyer at the state level, so I know what happens.
So good evening, Mayor, council members. Great to see you again. Uh, as we head into the last month of the legislative session in which ten thousand four hundred and seventy-two bills were filed, six thousand one hundred and eighty-five in the House and three thousand two hundred and seventy-five in the Senate, we continue to have the best lobby team in Texas working hard for you on your initiatives. McWilliams, as we have, as the firm has for the last twenty-five years. Uh, today, for instance, HB sixteen forty-four by Representative Oliverson, uh, relating to the legal use of possession and delivery of testing equipment that identifies the presence of fentanyl was approved on the House floor by a vote of a hundred and forty-five to zero. That's a real-time update. It just happened a couple hours ago. Uh, the priority Laredo bills continue to move forward in the process towards passage. Uh, since hosting Laredo Days in early February in which directors, commissioners and elected representatives, uh, and elected representatives, uh, and agi, agency heads, uh, who were collaborated with on issues facing Laredo, McWilliams has continued to steward solutions forward, um, kept close watch on Laredo's interests and communicated closely with city officials. Uh, among the work done was the filing and inclusion of twenty-three budget writers into Article eleven of House, the House Appropriations Bill, which now heads to the Senate for further negotiations. And, uh, as you can see, there's, there's our team. Uh, there are the various deadlines, uh, that have come to pass and that are in the future. May fifteenth being a big day, last day for the House to consider second reading House bills and House joint resolutions. So the next, uh, three weeks or so will be pivotal in getting hearing, committee hearings for bills, um, and, and bringing, uh, representatives from Laredo, uh, to Austin if needed for testimony. And then June second is the last day of session. So, uh, I mentioned the number of bills filed. The average Texas bill passage rate, however, is about fifteen percent. So, uh, out of all those bills, only a small percentage actually pass. So it's, it's a long journey. Um, and then the bills of council resolutions, just updated you on those. HB eleven seventy-three by Raymond relating to the administration of homeless housing services provided by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, uh, is, hasn't received a hearing yet, but it still might hear in the next couple of weeks. Just mentioned the bill sixteen forty-four. Um, that's going very well and the, the next step in that process is the Senate. Um, and then thirty-five seventy-two by Guillen, that was referred to land the resources management on three twenty-five, but it's not received a hearing. So we're in opposition to that. Uh, so things continue not to look very good for that bill because it hasn't received a hearing yet. And then we are for, uh, conversion of municipal sales and use tax for sports and community venues. Hearing requests have been submitted. Uh, those were referred to the Ways and Means Committee and we are optimistic that will receive a hearing here in the next couple of weeks. More, uh, resolutions, opposition to eight seventy-eight by Bergwell, opposition to, uh, HB nineteen by Meyer. Um, that's pending in the House Ways and Means. It was heard yesterday. I was at that hearing. There are about twenty witnesses. Um, so, uh, could be a, a difficult road to passage. Among other bills being tracked for SB ten, uh, oh eight and HB twenty-one fifty-six by Middleton and Harris respectively. Um, both these bills at the bottom there, SB twenty-one seventy-seven and HB thirty-five seventy-seven, um, the second one to assist local law enforcement agencies in solving violent and sexual offenses. Uh, uh, both are, uh, moving well and have a good, good chance to pass, uh, here in the last few weeks of the session. Uh, there you can see the budget writers that McWilliams has worked very hard for you on to get into Article eleven. And I, as I said, they, uh, moved through the appropriations process in the House and now the, the negotiations will continue on the Senate side. Uh, so as you can see, two point, over two-point-five billion in, uh, various requests. And, uh, so we'll continue, uh, working hard to advocate for those to make sure that they, uh, are stewarded through the Senate as well. So that's kind of the rundown, uh, on that process of budget writers there on that last slide. So big victory and hopefully the victories continue with regard to budget writers.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, if I may, bring up, uh, your item fifty-seven A three.
Yes, go ahead.
That's my motion.
Motion, second, on your favor.
Mayor, real quick to go along with that one, um, there's also a council member, Cigarroja's item for the veterans as well, um, fifty-seven F one. I don't know if we can.
As amended?
Yes.
Motion as amended, on your favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion pass. All right, fifty-seven, we're going to start with A three. Discussion with possible action to recognize veterans for all their contribution in defending our great country and scheduling for future key of the city ceremony and any matters related thereto. Sponsored Mayor Protem, Manisa Perez. Now this item was brought up more as a continuation of a recognition that was already started and where the city's highest honor, which was the key to the city of Laredo, was presented to them last year, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. These were veterans that were not able to make it. We had only about seventy last time, but we wanted to include more this, this time around so we can get their names and include them in a future key presentation that we are coordinating. So we can have all the veterans come up for a recognition picture and we can add them to the list so that those that were not present last time. So if you could come up for a picture, please.
Thank you, thank you.
Here we go.
Hey, ¿cómo estás? Long time no see.
Council, can we get you guys closer? Here, guys.
You want to go first?
Yeah, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do a few. You might have to go this side as well. Ready, one, two. Then, what's do you want from the side? Ready, right here.
Right over here. Ready, one, two, three, one more. Thank you. One more. Three, two.
Mayor, before we stop, I don't know if Victor can present his medal to them that he presented earlier and we can take a picture? Presenting it?
Yeah, go ahead. It's right here.
Just so we can get a picture with all the veterans.
You can be at the medal.
Right here?
Yeah.
No, we don't.
That I want. I'm gonna have to take that. Okay, ready? Two.
Right over here. Right here, ready, one, two, three, one more. Ready, one, two, one, two, three. Perfect.
Right here, real quick.
I don't have a phone anywhere. Yeah. Uh, one more.
Thank you all so much.
Seen you here.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
It's a different environment. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to see you, sir. Always a pleasure. Good to see you, sir. Good job.
I just need something.
Yeah, there's concerned. See, see, they can rest a little bit. Sir, thank you so much. Appreciate everything. That's it. Thank you. Please stop. Thank you. All right. Let's go and proceed. Ready? Next item, 57A1. 57A1, discussion with possible action on providing monies from Mayor's Priority Fund to the City of Laredo Public Health Department and any matters related thereto. Now.
57F1 is the one you're doing.
F1, okay.
No, no.
No, it's A1.
I, I think. Yeah, yeah, point of order.
Yeah, we need to continue on that.
Correct. 57F1 is the next item that we have. Mr. Secretary?
Yes, okay, let's make a correction there. 57A1, we skipped that.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
So proudly recognizing the dedicated City of Laredo employees who played a vital role in planning and coordination efforts to welcome and host the Wall That Heals, a three-quarter scale replica traveling exhibit of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington DC. Laredo was one of only 30 communities nationwide selected to showcase this meaningful exhibit. The Wall That Heals arrived on April 1st, 2025 and was greeted with a community parade featuring local law enforcement, firefighters, schools and veterans who escorted the exhibit to, to its display site at Unit Trade Stadium. The exhibit was open to the public 24 hours a day from April 2nd through April 6th, offering the community a powerful opportunity to reflect and honor the service of over 3 million Americans who served in the Vietnam War, including the 58,281 men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice. During its day, a series of ceremonies were held to commemorate the legal, the legacy and bravery of our veterans. The City of Laredo extends its heartfelt gratitude to the employees whose efforts ensured a successful and respectful presentation of this historic tribute. And just I also would like to, do we want to bring them up or? Can we present the video first? Yes, absolutely.
We were picked to be part of it. There is a, you have to solicit it and apply for it and we were fortunate that we got it. This is a once-in-a-lifetime event for the community.
It's very rewarding to be here and to represent those who have passed away by being part of this. It, it is very difficult, but it's very rewarding to work as a team. As you see here, this is actually a replica at the Washington DC. And the founders there have come to us and allowing us to build a wall here.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And just to each one of you who helped bring the Wall That Heals to our community, thank you. On behalf of the City Council, it is truly a pleasure, a privilege to recognize you today. You became part of something far greater than any one of us, a sacred moment where our community came together to remember, to honor and to heal. And you helped bring this to life. This was not simply about setting up an event. It was about creating space for the stories long held in silence, for tears that had waited decades and for a shared experience that transcended generations. You gave your time and heart and not for applause, but because you knew the weight of this moment. And you gave veterans a place to grieve, families a place to remember and our community a chance to come together. And that is no small thing and that is something profound. So take pride in the part that you play in our community and let it remind you that public service at its best is love and action. And you brought healing to this city. So thank you very much.
Mayor, I'm sorry. May I say something real quickly?
Yes, go ahead.
Gentlemen, I was born in Saigon, Vietnam, 1970. And I, I served 20 years in the Army Reserves. And if I may, when we go talk to, to people, we always talk about how we want to serve, to preserve our, our way of life here in America. But I tell you that we do touch the lives of, of people in these foreign lands. And I, I tell you, I'm living proof that your bravery, sacrifice and service has re-benefits because I'm sitting here as your city attorney. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, I am.
Can hit Coach right ahead with this now. Here, Coach. Get this driver. The coaches.
Ready, one, two, three, one more. Ready. Ready, one. One, two, three.
Sorry.
One, two. One more. Ready, one, two, three. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so, so much for everything.
If I, if I may say a few words, Mayor, Council?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, DJ Women's Park Director. I'm here just to face representing our staff and all the departments that put this together, all right? You know, it, it, it's kind of, it's difficult because it was an idea. Nobody really knew what was going on as we started getting together. We started, you know, putting it, knowing how important it was for, for, for our community. It finally hit me when I, I was, had a meeting and I was driving around trying to catch the motorcade. I was, I said this, I finally caught it over there by my home, alma mater, Martin High School. And when you see high school kids, junior high kids saluting the gentleman right behind me and the flag and, you know, to show the honor and the spirit and the, and the, this one really kind of hits me. So you know what, everything that worked, everything my staff did, all the department PD, it took a lot of coordination. But when those moments, when that, when I saw that moment, those kids salute the flag and stand their attention and, and the moment that these gentlemen behind me deserved, it, it was all worth it. It was, it was a lot of work, but thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to put it together. It was, now, now we know that every minute that we spent was well worth it. And I want to thank our staff, everybody that put this together, all the departments. It was a team effort from Council to Mayor and management and everybody. But everywhere, every much well worth it, believe me. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, honorable members of the City Council of City of Laredo, my name is Roque Vela. I am the Chairman of the City of Laredo Veteran Service Committee. Most of the time we can, as individuals, cannot speak for other veterans. This particular time, I believe that I can speak for the Vietnam warriors that served in Vietnam. This event at the City of Laredo, led by the City Council and the many departments, brought something to the Vietnam warrior that was a long time coming. We had not been recognized before, so I feel proud that I can say on behalf of the Vietnam warriors, thank you to all of you that made this possible for something that we needed to be recognized for the longest time. We want to thank you again. Thank you so much.
Next item? Thank you very much.
What's next, Mr. Secretary?
I had 57, one, two and three. Let's see. Yeah. Okay, 57. A1. Discussion with possible action on providing monies from the Mayor's Priority Fund to the City of Laredo Public Health Department and any matters related thereto. I will be tabling this item for a future meeting as I'm being told that the numbers may change based on additional federal cuts to our health department. So I'll table 57A1. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. And number two, discussion with possible action on expanding the Laredo International Sister Cities Festival to provide opportunity for other areas of the city and relieve to those on the current waiting list and any matters related thereto. Now, reason this item was brought up is to discuss and highlight the success that we've had, we've been having in the International Sister Cities Festival that we have already had every year. With this success comes a waiting list because there is just not enough rooms for all the merchants. So I've been getting calls from mayors from all over Mexico that had mentioned that if there was a way they could get some of their merchants in because they have been waiting on the waiting list for years. And one possible solution that came to mind is maybe to look for other parts of the city like downtown or extend a current footprint at the same arena. So my motion would be to instruct management to come up with a proposal on how we can maintain the current quality of the festival while allowing for even more opportunity and success from other more merchants from the states of Mexico to participate. That is my motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Good to know. 49. Who has 49? 49. Let's see. We get to 49. Here it is. Okay.
Mayor, point of order, if I can ask this, Mr. Secretary, what, what is the following items on the list so far?
It was 49 is next. And then I had 57C1, 57B2 and number 36 is pending.
Thank you.
All right. 49. Annual presentation and updated report by the Laredo Economics Development Corporation discussion and possible action.
Let's see, do we, do we have our slide presentation? I don't see it on the desktop. I have it here. Over here on the side.
Over here on the side. On the side.
Right there. All right, I have it on here.
Okay, there it is.
Okay, good. Mr. Mayor, Council? So are we waiting for the rest of Council?
No, we have form.
Yeah, we have form. Yeah, have form. Okay. Well, some of our board members left already too, so. It's really great to have the opportunity to discuss our, our relationship. As you know, I started in October of this year and. And when I got here, I was told that I needed to make sure that I had a presentation ready for council. And that presentation had been partially prepared, actually had been prepared by Tony Arce, terrific guy, who was twice Chairman of the LEDC and was interim CEO and helped direct the search committee that brought me here. So I was happy to inherit that presentation and we were prepared to give it. And we were told that, you know, because of the water situation, we had a reprieve. But with that, I decided to update the presentation so it would be a little more me when we gave it. Then we were thought, it was told that, you know, we'd give the presentation in January. So over the Christmas break, I really re-upped the presentation so that I'd have it ready at a moment's notice in January. So all this time, we've had this presentation. I continue to try to update it a little bit. So when it came up with the bond referendum and everything that, you know, we still hadn't presented our annual report, I was happy to know that, you know, I have a presentation that I could pull out and have ready. So I wanted to just kind of give some background on that because I think it's important that we have really good communication if we can work together as a team for the benefit of Laredo. And it's hard to have good communication if we don't get together on a regular basis. So you understand the whole mission of the Laredo Economic Development Corporation. I don't really need to go into too much about what are mission statement, vision statement. You're welcome to kind of go through it. I know time is limited and I want to just concentrate on one important point. And that is the empowerment statement. You know, there are two ways that you can raise money to do important things for a community. And one of them is to raise taxes, and that's very unpopular, right? Nobody really wants to see a tax raise of any kind. But another way to provide money for a city and to create a high quality of life is to grow the tax base. And that is the mission of economic development. If we can grow the tax base with more capital investment and that capital investment multiplies in the economy, you guys understand the multiplier effect, that reverberates many times over. If you create jobs and the people that get those jobs spend money in the economy for houses, for food, for cars, that creates economic impact. And that is empowerment. When mile one creates new businesses and those businesses spend money in the economy and hire people and take out leases, that grows the economy. So kind of the under, the theme underlying the whole effort here is that we can grow the economy. And boy, does it add up over the years. So since 2011, the LEDC has successfully facilitated 1.49 billion dollars in capital investment, leading to the creation of 6,600 new jobs, the retention of over 500 positions, and an increase over 239 million in business expansion over the last fourteen years. That's pretty impressive, I think. I wasn't here for most of it, so I can't personally take credit for it. I wish I could. But I can say that we've got about 290 million dollars in the first quarter of 2025. And we've got 220 more in the pipeline. This is in the first quarter of 2025. So not only have we performed in the past, but that level of performance is increasing exponentially. And this kind of information is included in the benchmarking report that we do for the city every month, by the way. Now, I've never gotten a comment on the benchmarking report, so I brought one for you along with the new newsletter that we're doing to try to communicate a little bit better what we're doing on a regular basis to council. Because I don't want to burden you guys with extra meetings and everything. I know you guys got a lot going on. But this kind of information will be included on a monthly basis in our executive summary report as well as in our Border Insights magazine. And I have Ray Reyes here. I'd like to pass those out to every member of council. So in the magazine, in the center, you'll find the executive summary in which these figures and others are talked about. So while Ray is passing this out, Ray Reyes is our Vice President of International. And Joseph Mendiola is helping him. He's our Vice President of Business Attraction and Retention. And of course, Yvette Pena is not here with us, but she's our Chief Financial Officer. And Anna Benavides. This is a team that is at your disposal. I want to stress really that this is not a situation of the city and the LEDC and us versus them. We are part of Laredo. We're all citizens of Laredo. We're all taxpayers in Laredo. So in addition to the generous contribution that we get from the city, we actually get most of our funding from private sources. So we have a slight advantage there. All of our board members are citizens of Laredo, taxpayers of Laredo, business people here in Laredo that are contributing. Our team not only includes the members of our staff, but all of the people that we work with. Well, here is our board. And you'll recognize a lot of the names that are on here. Dr. Diana Ortiz and Dr. Orlando Ortiz were here earlier. Unfortunately, they have to leave. But all of our board members that are here, would you please stand? Thank you for being here. We really appreciate your help. Our Chairman, our Vice Chairman, Jimmy Knopson, is here. Ignacio Abrazo could not be here tonight because he had dental work this afternoon. And he said that he was too numb to be able to be here. But you all know Nacho. And you know, most of these members here. You know, our Governmental Affairs Committee includes Hector Alanis and Andrew Karanko, who work also with the Chamber. We were all on that legislative trip to DC. We were all on the legislative trip to Austin. And we want to continue to be able to engage on behalf of Laredo again as a team. When you look at Team Laredo, it's not just the LEDC staff, but we have broken down the silos, I believe, to work more effectively with all of our colleagues. And I'm happy to say that Miriam and Monica are both here from the city, from the Chamber. I wish Eileen could have been with us tonight, but she's here. And Monica? There she is. And Miriam? Oh, over here now in the corner. We have a delightful working relationship. And it's, as I said, more of a team effort than when I think we got here. Because we had a meeting, you know, and you were there and Mr. Lindane was there. And we were kind of talking about staff. And I said, you know, how many staff members do you have? You know, Miriam? And I think she said five or something like that. And I had, I had six. I said, between us, we have a staff of 11. If you look at what your budget is and combined with our budget and the private contributions that we're getting from all of those board members and members, who are all taxpayers and contributors, okay? We have a tremendous team to market Laredo. And if we can all pull together, if we can work together, if we can jointly plan, if we can jointly work together, just think how effective we can be. We've been effective already. I think, you know, that slide, 1.4 million, almost 1.5 billion dollars of capital investment is impressive. But think what we can do when we're really pulling together. In addition to everything else, I just want to let you know that, you know, we do have third-party independent recognition from the IEDC. We have won awards for our work. You know, those are not just plaques that sit on the wall, but I think it shows that other professionals look at some of the projects that we've done and recognize the quality of the work. And what kind of work is that? Well, it's important that we retain existing business, but we also want to recruit and attract new business to Laredo. Everybody's concerned about the America First Trade Policy. We just heard, you know, what we're trying to do to interface with Washington. But we are a one-trick pony right now with respect to trade. For better or worse, whatever the thing is, Laredo depends on the flow of trade coming through the I-35 corridor. But what if five years ago, we had diversified the Laredo economy into manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, data centers, high-tech jobs? Well, that could have been done. It's been done in other places. Trade was good, and it was good enough. But right now, wouldn't it be great if we had more? So the LEDC has a program, a plan, to move Laredo into a more diversified economy. And we're making really good progress on that. But we are a resource for site selectors and we can be a marketing arm for the city. We have a lot of lead generation sources in addition to going to conferences and conventions and both in the United States and in Mexico and where opportunity presents around the world. And we share those leads. And Miriam and I are working together. And an important thing is, is that we're both going to SelectUSA, the largest conference on foreign direct investment in the country in May. And we're going to do that together. One of our board members and benefactors, Willie Hornsberger, some of you may know him and his family, have bankrolled us in terms of a video presentation at the prestigious Swiss Dinner at SelectUSA. And Miriam and I are going to be in that room with a number of our board members and our allies to promote Laredo in Washington, DC to the world. This is just an example of some of the lead generation sources that we have. With respect to site selection services, I was just at a conference for site selectors, you know, in San Antonio. We worked with a number of them and we have two fam tours coming up during the same week, coming up this, you know, this month. So site selection services. If you look at our five-year activity summary comparison, and we've added in, since we had some extra time, our year-to-date 2025, you can see that over the years, not only have we contributed a tremendous amount of activity, but we have increased exponentially as we've moved forward through the years. In terms of landed projects, just twenty-four and between 24 and 25, we have the DSV project, 100 million. Stoughton Industries, which just had their groundbreaking and they publicly acknowledged the LEDC in the press releases and at the groundbreaking, and Hirsch Family Investment of 90 million, 290 million. That was in that earlier slide as well, but that's the actual breakdown. These are the landed projects that we've had over the years. You'll recognize a lot of these names. Unimax, Medline, TPA Group, NAFTA Trooper, TPA Group, Crowley Partners, Clear Choice, 332 million, 200,000 dollars. So how much taxes does that amount to over the course of those companies, that capital investment, the jobs they pay their employees? How many voters does that bring in? So the economic capital investment and job creation of the landed projects of economic development help grow the tax base. And when you grow the tax base, you don't have to grow the tax rate as much, if at all. So if we can continue to grow the tax base, that can create a real windfall of opportunity for Laredo as it moves forward. For those of you just joining us, I have a slide that showed 1.49 billion dollars in capital investment over the last 14 years. So here are some of the landed projects over the years. You know, I think you'll recognize a number of those names. And a lot of those are contributing tremendously to our economy right at this moment. At this moment, we need all of that. Here's the five-year economic impact in terms of capital investment. And what's really interesting is if you look at the dark purple column there on the right in the first graph, that's year-to-date 2025, which has already surpassed, you know, year 2021, 22, 23. And it's well on its way to catch up with the annual capital economic impact for 2024. Here are some of the partner projects under development in Laredo right now. And if you look at all of those, and we have touched every one of these in one way or another, it's really significant. The thing is, is these projects are under development and sometimes they're expanded even as they're under development. It's nice that, you know, top Texas Economic Development Connection communities recognized us as one of the top job creation project count communities in the area. We work very closely as we're recruiting with our workforce partners, not only to attract new development, but also for business retention and business expansion. Because the essence of recruitment is job creation. And job creation requires an educated job training Texas workforce. And we have all of this here on our side. We also try to help promote Los Dos Laredos. And there are 13 workforce training facilities and institutions on the Laredo side. If you put us together, it's a real formidable workforce. And something that I would like to see happen, and many of you were there in Washington, DC, when I brought it up to Senator Cruz and Senator Cornyn, who really seemed to like the idea, is that if we could take Elon Musk's idea of a visa program for tech workers, which was endorsed by Trump on the first day of the administration, and we could get them to extend that for skilled labor coming from Mexico for manufacturing, we could boost Made in America and give the Trump administration a major triumph. If we could bring workers across, we could vet them, we could put an RFID tag on them and they could come across and go back. The wages they spent in Mexico would lift the economy on that side of the border. The manufacturing and capital investment in the US for Made in America on our side of the border would be phenomenal. I think it's a great idea and something that we could champion. These are the kinds of ideas and the kind of activism that the Laredo Economic Development Corporation can bring to Laredo. Stakeholder support. Well, some of our stakeholders are here in the room. We just, many of them couldn't be here tonight. Some of them had to leave. But here are some of the letters. One of them, you know, is from CRS Legal, and that was a delegation from three countries, Mexico, Brazil, and Colombia, that did a fam tour here in Laredo. And that's the letter of support. We are now having potential visits that are being arranged right now to bring those countries and a whole delegation of manufacturers and potential investors to Laredo from all of those countries. And they've extended that to the Netherlands, actually. So our administration division does something that I think you're all aware of. How many of you have been at Boots and Bling, our EDI award? Have you been to Pathways to Trade Symposium? Okay. And how about Economic Development Week, which is coming up? So while Miriam and I are at SelectUSA in Washington, D.C., Economic Development Week has been meticulously planned for that same period in May this year. I hope all of you will attend the various events. We expect it to be one of our best ever. There's going to be a transportation summit. There's going to be, you know, a job fair and workforce component to it and a shop local component. It's going to really be a nice boost for economic development here in Laredo. We also do targeted public relations, business-to-business advertising, and social media. On one of the previous slides, you saw how our website hits are hitting an all-time high. Well, we're covered up with leads from LinkedIn. Whatever the effects of the Trump administration and the tariffs have had, they've also focused attention on Laredo. We've gotten a lot of media attention. We're getting a lot of social media attention. And believe it or not, we're getting a lot of leads, a lot of potential manufacturing leads, a lot of leads for data and for energy. If we can bring together, if we can use our natural gas, we lead Texas, Webb County leads Texas off and on. It goes neck and neck, but in natural gas production. If you have energy and you have water, we have four aquifers in the region in addition to the Rio Grande. So if you have power and you have water, you can get manufacturing, you can get data centers, you can get AI. And if you can get AI, you can get technology companies, and you can start innovating and diversifying the economy. We're not going to be able to do this by ourselves. We're going to do it as a team with our chamber, with the city's economic development, with Webb County. If we can all work together as a team, just think what we can accomplish.
Mayor, if I can, I just have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you have your lead conversion rate?
I'm sorry?
Do you have your lead conversion rate?
Lead conversion rate? Lead conversion rate? I don't know that I have a figure like that right off the hand or off the top of my hand. But I'd love to develop one.
Well, how many leads actually, you know, that came directly through the LEDC resulted in a project? I think it would be helpful.
We don't, we don't actually have a contact database like Salesforce. We really don't have a budget for it, but I'd love to do that. A lot of that software will do lead conversion and keep it automatically for you. So I would love to do that.
Thank you.
But and I'm happy to have conversations like this with council and open to suggestions for things that we can do to improve. So at any rate, you know, you know about a lot of those activities, and, you know, they are in the magazine in front of you. And we do a lot of advocacy and promotion. And as you can see in the right-hand column, these are our LEDC committees. Dr. Ortiz heads our strategic planning committee. And we have talked with Miriam and with City Manager Nub about the, our plan, our board's plan, to engage in a comprehensive, integrated strategic planning initiative. And we'd like to do that in conjunction with the city and with the county so that we have buy-in and collaboration on our aspects. And I think when we do that, it will be something that will be a uniting aspect, but it'll also be an educational aspect as we bring everybody together. On transportation and infrastructure, we're going to have a great workshop in Economic Development Week. Our vice chairman, Jimmy Knottson, is now head of our membership and networking committee. And the real power of our organization is the intelligence and the talent and the economic power of our board. And by building that and building our membership and building our network, including with our workforce and education committee, we're going to be even stronger. With respect to governmental relations, Hector Alanis and Andrew Caronco are co-chairs of that. They're actually with the chamber as well. And we're going to coordinate our governmental relations aspect so that we can augment what the city is doing and we can add additional layers of support. Elmo Lopez couldn't be with us tonight because he had a board meeting. But he is really engaged on healthcare. And our bi-national committee, which is something new, has our co-chairs from both the state of Tamaulipas and Nuevo Leon. I won't go into too much about our advocacy and promotion. You can kind of look over the slides in greater detail as you have time. But the level of our activities is significant. So our future is what we make it. So if we can break down the silos, instead of being a kind of an us against them sort of a thing, if we can look at it as us, as a city, as a team, then I think our future is very bright. And I think I've shown a trend in terms of economic development that says Laredo's on a roll. And if we normalize the situation on tariffs, which we all pray will happen, and trade resumes, and we have diversified our economy into all the areas that I've talked about on top of it, just think how strong Laredo will be. So thank you very much, and I'm going to yield to a little discussion on mile one.
Can I ask you? Can I ask just a question, just because you got me on the... You had, you had me on diversification. And I just got reminded because I see a gentleman down there that I worked with alongside for 12 years at LISD, Dr. Pettis is out there. And we became a school district of innovation. And before I got elected, I was studying the issue of how a city becomes a city of innovation. And once you get that designated, I think Boston has it. I think Silicon Valley has it. And everything that gets attached to that label, which is great financial benefit from the federal government, from everybody else, I think maybe the iOS rating goes up. I'm not sure. I don't know the darn details about that in detail. But I would think that if we're going to work together, and you're going to get the chamber and the Laredo Economic Development Foundation and our city and everybody else, that there's going to be an attachment figure in there that, you know, basically brings everybody together for one common purpose. And just a suggestion, I'm not sure how it works in detail, but it might be a good idea to attach a goal-oriented, innovative idea that brings everybody together.
Councilman couldn't agree more. It's just one of a million things that I think I've got on a list. What I, what I hope, what I hope that we can do is as we engage in the strategic planning exercise, I think that, and I'm not anticipating that the city has to pay for all of that or anyway. I believe that our membership, our board membership, who we have already consulted with. I mean, if you look at just the support that I've gotten from Kiln Construction, you know, from Kirk Kraus and Kraus Development, from Sashivishwani, I think that, you know, we have, and Dean Lindgren, what is her? Yes, Dean's here. You know, Talise, Walkers, Brittenhams. You know, we get people involved in this process. Then we'll be able to pay to have a really great strategic planning exercise. And we can take all of these initiatives, and we can empower them, and we can fund them and move it forward. So it's not at the expense of taxpayer money, but we can raise the money to do it. And the reason for that is is that our community will see a return on their investment. I mean, when you stop and think about it, what businessman wants to pour money into an organization if it's not giving them a return on investment, right? But if we can show what we're doing, and the strategic planning process, I think, can do that, then I think we're going to see that we'll be able to self-fund this project and incorporate many of those things, including, you know, a good conversion ratio measure that, you know, we can keep track of on a regular basis. I'm in the process of working with my staff on redoing our benchmarking report, Councilman Perez, that that I think will more effectively reflect the activity level that we're having. I mean, it's a big funnel of leads that we have. Of course, that funnel drains down into landed projects. Wouldn't it be great to be able to track where they fall off and where they come in? And that's how you hone your efforts.
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, just to, just to follow up on that. A lot of the projects that you mentioned are all industrial projects. And I know that we, as a council, have talked about this over the years that, you know, we're, Laredo's kind of doesn't really have difficulty attracting that type of development. And in the spirit of diversification, we were trying to figure out ways to get more manufacturing or even with the revitalization of the downtown efforts. I think we had discussed in prior years before you came on board as the, you know, the main, the main person, that we would appreciate some help from the LEDC in those areas and not so much on the areas that the locals are already, projects that they're already doing. And I understand the partnership and working together, but we also want to be strategic in our resources. And if we're not pushing the under, the areas that are not as, as like desirable or right now the diversification needs, somebody needs to be taking the lead on those diversification needs. So that's why I was asking about the lead conversion because I'm interested to know how many from the outside contacted LEDC, and then you all were able to get them to actually invest in Laredo versus working with the locals that already have these decades-long plans so we can kind of tackle our strategic plans and goals more effectively? That was why my question was.
Well, we, we, we could have a nice meeting and really discuss all the great points that you, you just made, Councilwoman. But let me just hone in on, on the one thing is is that, you know, you can't go back and change the past, all right? And, you know, our, two of our past presidents are here. And they did a really wonderful job as the numbers, you know, indicate. But, but it's, it's natural to dance to your strengths. But moving forward and looking at it in the light of the current economy, okay? I think it makes, it makes perfect sense to diversify. And the best way to do that is not just hit or miss, but with a good, comprehensive strategic plan. So there are some really great firms out there. I could write a strategic plan, but who would believe it at the state and at the national level? Kind of thing. You get something from Angelou, or you get something from Dr. Perryman. And we would, we would put out an RFP. We'd let everybody bid it, of course. But get a top-notch firm that does a really good job of, you know, projecting economic impact. And then I think we'll get, start getting a lot of buy-in, not just from our own base, but from outside. People will believe those numbers and believe the things that we do. And we'll have a better plan for how to move it forward. And we'll set up a timeline for it, and we'll manage that timeline. And I think we'll move forward. So just moving forward as we have, Laredo's been good. But I don't know how many of you have read Chris Collins' book, Good to Great, but it was a great book. And no puns intended. But, but in his book, he makes a really important point. Good is the enemy of great. So sometimes good is good enough. And I think it was good enough for Laredo during all these years. And we can't really fault the folks that were here. They're doing good, right? But sometimes the complacency of doing good keeps you from taking the initiative to be great. Laredo should be Texas' next Metroplex. It should be the capital of the border economy. To do that, we have to diversify, and we can diversify. We have power, we have water, we have workforce, we have access to the USMC chain. We, we can do it. And in fact, nobody else on the border, I think, has the unique advantages that Laredo does have. So it's just a matter of putting it all together. And I think that comprehensive planning exercise will be a good way of bringing all this together. Both of your candidates. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, councils. Cesar Gierandis, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, Cesar Gierandis, Chief Operating Officer for Mile One for the record. I will be brief. Today, I want to touch on some points and some performance measures that we have accomplished over the years. I will read out our mission statement and add a little bit to it as well. Mile One's mission is to address the economic challenges of the Laredo region by providing fertile ground for entrepreneurial growth, innovation, and business diversity, to everyone's point here today. The Mile One program guides entrepreneurs to individualized mentorship and provides professional and modern workspaces at a subsidized cost. Mile One is also actively provides community education through workshops, webinars, and classes on topics such as startup guidance, financial literacy, marketing, professional development, et cetera. And as we have conversations about expanding Mile One and developing that particular program, our natural pivot is to make Mile One an incubator for emerging technologies. That is what's something that is extremely important to the, to the growth of Mile One, to the growth of our membership, and just to be able to diversify the Mile One, the membership that we currently have. As Mr. Stedman mentioned, we did get recognized as well for our incubator program through International Economic Development Council, which is very important. That is one of our near and dear programs that we offer at Mile One. And just to discuss a little bit about how we have our membership, we currently have 151 members, minus three administrations. We have 148 members that office out of Mile One that utilize Mile One services and that take advantage of the support that Mile One offers. And many of these businesses have become very successful and are now moving on into the community and opening up their own brick and mortars, their own warehousing, distribution centers, offices, et cetera. So the city contract has stated that we have some performance measures that we need to meet, entrepreneurs assisted, jobs created, new memberships, and businesses incubated. And I'll give you guys just a few quick numbers. Under our contract, we need to have direct contact or presentations to a minimum of 20 business alliances per quarter. As you can see here, 22, we did 1,500. 23, another 1,500, and FY 2024, a little over 500. And we're currently, for this year alone, 126 members are entrepreneurs served. Now, I want to emphasize this. We do have a membership that we focus on. We do tater most of the things that we do for our membership. But Mile One has become a community space. We support non-members through strategy sessions, through mentoring, and through resource development or partners. So as they come in for support, we work with them, and then we provide them the resources that they need if Mile One is not the best fit for them. So I'm sure you've heard out in the community that Mile One is the place to be to get that support, to get that guidance, to network with people, to brainstorm and collaborate as their businesses grow. As you can see, jobs created here in our performance measures, we need to create 15 new jobs per year. As you can see, we've blown that metric out of the water. And currently, we're at 43 new jobs for the first quarter of 2025. Let me just say, 43 might sound like a small, small number, but when you're a one-man entrepreneur and you hire somebody else, you've just doubled your team. And so I think that carries a lot of significance in what we're doing and focusing on entrepreneurial community and small business community here at Mile One. When it comes to new memberships, we're supposed to have eight to 10 new members. Pardon me. Yes, eight to 10 new members per quarter. Again, we had over 65 new members in 2024. We currently have 40 new members this fiscal year, '24, '25. And finally, businesses incubated. As you can see, our businesses incubated here. We're at about eight new incubators per year. Again, last year alone, we were over 40 businesses incubated. So many, many small businesses are taking advantage, more so after the pandemic, where the stay-home and work or remote work kind of became more significant. Businesses and also the online and the e-commerce businesses started growing as well. Our membership started to increase. And so we've been very, very fortunate. And then one metric. Uh, and then one metric that is not on here that I want to talk about a little bit, as Mile One first started, we had 34 members. You saw the slide, we're at about 148. We have served over 520 members through our doors over the last seven years that Mile One has been operating. Now, one of the, the performance measures here is to cre- uh, the creation of $1.2 million of economic capital investment. Uh, I am pleased to say that we're currently at $1 million for this fiscal year of capital investment with only six months into the budget. So I'm confident that we will break that or surpass that metric. And, and I want to just say a quick story real quick. Uh, we have a member here today with us and I'll recognize him shortly, who has contributed to 50% of this, uh, capital investment that has put into the community. Uh, when I first met him, I met him through Toastmasters, which is an organization that, uh, meets at Mile One. And he told me, I'm working, I've been working for this company for 20 years now in construction and I'm looking about, I'm looking at going on my own. And, uh, he did. He went part-time with his job and part-time on his business. And most recently, he started our Launchpad incubator program. And that's Mr. Ricardo Rivera standing over there at 360 General Contractors. He has had contracts with Webb County, he is, uh, currently also bidding for contracts with the City of Laredo and so forth. So as we diversify our membership, uh, you will see where the technology businesses or ideas or entrepreneurs will start kicking in. These are some of the, the programs that we've done, uh, with a team of two, I believe that we have really done quite a bit in our community. Uh, just to highlight a few, uh, Programma Salera fourth generation, to the mayor's point about, uh, sister cities participation, several of our graduates from the Programma Salera program from the Mitra Can region have attended the Sister Cities Festival and has been very pleased with the outcome. So I believe that that is a very strong initiative for our foreign direct investment programs. Uh, technical assistance is always ongoing. We do several mentor sessions, strategy sessions daily, uh, almost, uh, you know, multiple times to help these, uh, small business owners understand the processes and the intricacies of opening up a business. Uh, we will be launching our Women Entrepreneurs Rock Series, which provides technical assistance to female aspiring entrepreneurs, starting in May, uh, that provides subject matter and access to capital, uh, entity formation, trademarking, marketing, uh, you name it, anything having to do with small business development, uh, we teach and we show those master classes or present those master classes. Um, we also assist our Launchpad and Business Incubator graduates with site selection. Ideally, we want to develop downtown, we want to focus on downtown, but some of them need other types of spaces or other locations. So we start downtown and we work outwards, inner city, and then we go from there. Depending on the type of industry or business they are, we'll determine what type of site selection we support.
Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
Uh, I just want to, um, I guess, like, say that, you know, I appreciate all the, the presentation and all the thoroughness, but, um, we're, we're kind of going to end up running out of time, Mayor, so I don't know if it's possible to request, uh, just to kind of wrap it up, just so we can move on, unless there's a motion you need from us or anything like that.
No, no, I just wanted to showcase our, uh, activities, that's all. Thank you. So as you can see, uh, in our Launchpad graduates, we've had several, I don't know if the slide can go up, give me about a minute or so and we'll be done. Uh, as you can see, those are the graduates that have completed our program, our two-year incubator program, and have successfully moved into the Laredo business community. And then, of course, our partnerships. As I mentioned, we are a staff of two, there's only so much we can do for our community, so we bring in partners, including the City of Laredo, Webb County, our current, uh, university, LC and Tami U, along with other organizations that help us in supporting our small business community. And, uh, to a council member, Godzás' point about technology and innovation, and I'll end with this, um, I am sitting on the, uh, Tami U Ares Committee, which is, uh, readiness in engineering science, where these students are developing applications. As I mentioned, we're talking to capital, uh, ventureists, you know, angel investors that would like to invest in these particular projects. So we are partnering these people up, we are making those connections so that these students don't leave us, so that these students stay in town. I'm sure you all are very familiar with the young man that created the patch. We need to keep that gentleman in Laredo. He's going A&amp;M, but I'm going to make it a point to keep him here and keep him engaged so that he can come back to Laredo and launch that product or launch that, that, whatever it is that he's launching, that patch, to make sure that Laredo is recognized as an innovative city. Thank you.
Mayor, I just.
Thank you.
So we really thank you for your time and we're happy to spend time individually or collectively to have further discussions. And we thank you very much for your attention.
Councilwoman.
Wanted to point out that Laredo has been recognized positively for being a good place to start a business and entrepreneurship, so I'm sure you all have contributed to that success, and so thank you for your hard work.
Mr. Ne, do you want to say?
Oh, I'll let the council finish first.
Just, just, um, I was invited to attend a Mile One graduation ceremony and the ceremony was, um, of international, um, business entrepreneurs. And the businesses that they were creating were not just for national or for, um, United States distribution. You're talking about businesses that are expanding into the world market into Latin America. And the diversity of what they presented was incredibly impressive. And they gave credit to Mile One and the efforts by your team of individuals that, business people from our community, giving them advice on how to get started, on marketing, on all the aspects of making a successful business launch. And it was really impressive. So I, I, I appreciate your words and I'm very supportive of your efforts.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Ma- Mayor and City Council, I, I prepared a statement for tonight as well, too. I'm, I'm happy that we got the annual report completed, uh, but I wanted to state that the Laredo Economic Development Corporation continues to be a valued partner in helping our city grow and thrive through their efforts to support local businesses, attract the new investment that they talked about, and promote Laredo's unique position as a hub for trade. They contribute meaningfully to our community's long-term success. They're a, they're a part of our whole partnership and our relationship with business. Their collaborative approach and steady leadership make them an important part of Laredo's progress. Also want to recognize Mile One, whose work complements these efforts by helping small businesses and entrepreneurs take their first steps into trade industry. Together, they strengthen Laredo's position as a place of opportunity and connection. Had an opportunity to meet with their committee here just in the last couple of weeks, and I just want to say thank you to the entire board for everything, all the commitment that they have. Thank you, Mr. Stedman. Thank you, Cesar. And, uh, I just want to say that, uh, their partnership with us means a lot to us and it helps us, helps us move the city forward.
And if I may say, Cesar, thank you so much for that statement. And I would just like to say that that was a great opportunity to have someone from the city actually engaging in a dialogue with our board. And you have four representatives on the LEDC board, and we'd love to see you at our meetings and we'd like to have your input. You know, it's, it's so important, the strength of our membership, as I had said, is the talent and the expertise of our members. And your talent and your expertise and your perspective from the city, so important to us. So we'd love to have more dialogue like that and, and more interaction. And if you can come to us on our board meetings, that's great. We'll come to you, you just let us know, we're happy to talk anytime.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I think my item is next.
Yes.
I'm mistaken, 57C1.
57C1.
Discussion with possible action to establish a black flow inspection division within the utility department to conduct annual inspections on black flow preventers within our water system and to develop a free structure for said services and any other materials there, too, sponsored by Mayor Protem Vanessa Perez. This item was brought to the agenda because obviously, when this came about with, uh, Mr. Pischker, about having this backflow prevented check, we got a lot of calls from citizens stating how much plumbing companies were going to be charging our, our public to get those inspections done. And when it first started out, a hundred and fifty to $200. And now we're hearing is that these plumbing companies are gouging because the City of Laredo is requiring this now. It's been a law for 30 years, but we've never implemented it. So now these companies are charging you from three to $400 to inspection, for inspections, which to me is absolutely ridiculous, to get an inspection on a backflow preventer. So myself and Mr. Ne spoke about this, with Miss Perez as well, and we talked about it, possibly getting, um, some type of a department going there with the utilities department to see if we can get our own inspectors to charge way less than that, because our citizens are going to need to do it if you have an irrigation system. So that's why this was brought to the agenda, we want to make sure that our citizens aren't being gouged by plumbing companies, unfortunately. And if it's something we can do to help out our citizens, we're definitely going to do that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, management team. Eli de los Santos, interim, uh, utilities director, for the record. If I may, I have a very small presentation.
Please.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, does this require a certification to, to be able to do? And how many people do we have employed right now in the city that have it?
To test the backflow preventers?
Yes.
Uh, we have zero.
Zero?
Uh, what we have right now, and I'll show you through the presentation, we have CSI inspectors.
Is that sufficient?
That is only to go in and verify that the residents, that there is a business. And I'll, I'll go through the, through the presentation, that will kind of answer some of your questions.
I'm just curious, uh, before you get to that, is, um, what would it take to get our employees that certification? Do you have that as part of your presentation?
Yes.
Do you?
So, uh, the current, uh, department that we have in utilities is the Cross Connection Control Program. And our program focused areas is conducting, uh, customer service inspections, which are the CSIs, performing backflow assembly surveys, and ensuring, uh, registration testing of backflow prevention assemblies. Uh, the backflow prevention assemblies, the requirements are for, uh, commercial customers is that they have them both in domestic and irrigation meters. Uh, for residential customers, only need it if they have an irrigation system, whether they have a separate irrigation meter or not. Uh, our current department license requirements are for inspectors, it's not required to have a ba- uh, backflow preventer assembly test license, which we call a P back. Inspectors are only required to, uh, obtain a CSI license. Our customer responsibilities and recommendations, uh, from TCQ, uh, following discussions with TCQ and staff, it is recommended that cities of our size have the customers be responsible for their, uh, backflow testing. The key reasons, uh, for this recommendation from TCQ is that entering into private property, working on private lines and equipment can create legal and, uh, operational challenges.
Mr. Ne, as you and I have spoken about this before, I'm sorry, Mayor, I apologize. Might be TCQ recommendations, but the fact of the matter is, our people simply can't afford these, these fees that these, these plumbing companies are charging. And it's something that you and I have spoken about over and over again, and, um, I want to bring this on and hopefully motion to you to, to, uh, look a little further into it, see what we can do to help our people out.
Uh, yes, and Mayor and City Council, councilmember, uh, so yes, I, I'd be happy for that motion and that request to take this farther within there. Just so you know, uh, because we have, and as councilmember alludes to it, is that...
Yes, I haven't motioned it yet, no. Not yet.
I didn't hear my report, I guess. Or at least my pieces as well, too. So, so the, the thing is, is that we have this regulation out there that's been in place since 1999, I, I believe, and so we've not enforced it the way it is. So a lot of our homeowners are not aware of this requirement. Uh, there's been inconsistent testing and reporting. Uh, and so as we look through this, now TCQ is saying that we don't want to take on, it's better for the customer to take on, that never changes, no matter who's going to do the test or the inspection. The one thing that we looked at, once I spoke with the councilmember, was we have to, we have to keep in mind the liability concerns, we have to keep in mind the under-recovery of the costs, we have to make sure that, that the value is there, administrative inefficiencies, accessing the challenges. But what we, what we can do though, and, and I think, uh, Mayor Protem alludes to it as well, too, what we can do is, well, first off, we need to get our staff out there and get them, uh, licensed to be able to do this test. What's going to happen, though, is that when we go out there and do the test, and that's the, the backflow prevention is a, is a, there's a pressure test that's involved with the br- backflow to make sure that it doesn't back into our system and everything. So what the city can do is we can actually conduct the annual test if we have the equipment and the training to do that. At that point in time, and, and I guess the, the series of what the councilmember and I had talked about was also the homeowners can go ahead and contract it out to a private as well, too. We're, we're not going to stop that from happening either. But we are the regulatory body that we have to accept all the records in as far as what that testing looks like. So the, the thing that we have to make sure of, though, is that if we go out and do a test and we find that there is something wrong with their system, the homeowner is the ones that will have to fix it. The city can, city will not enter on, and that's what I think we're alluding to, is that we don't want to take on that liability onto the private property. But we can do the test. And in my mind, I think we can do the inspection for that. I anticipate based upon what we're hearing about the, the, uh, the testing fee at $100 to $300, depending on what it is, um, that we can probably do it for at least 30% less than that, at around $70 a, a test, if we have the right people, based upon the number of, of inspections we think we're going to have in, within the structure. Um, so we can estab- we definitely can establish a system if we have the trained personnel to do it and to walk out there. Just note that if we do find something wrong with the system, we will also have to establish a requirement as to how quickly they make the repairs of, of that from the inspection.
Mr. Ne, don't they have to do that now?
They, they would, but yeah, they would have to take on the full cost of that. I guess if, if they had somebody privately come out and do the inspection, the city may or may not know about it before it's done. But if the city does initiate this service, which I, I'm, uh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't train our inspectors, our inspectors do a different stuff. I would do operational people at some level. But we could, we could, I think, uh, one of the early estimates, we, we were looking at four to five people we would need trained for this in order to be on it, uh, often enough to get it done annually within our 6,000 to 8,000 different, uh, systems we believe are out there.
Mayor, if I may? This item was more than anything else, just so that way we'd give people an option, not to have to hire somebody so expensive. And because this was even an eye-opener for me, because I didn't know this was a law 30 years ago, we've never enforced it. So to our people, it was surprising also.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that it, it, it's actually workable for them.
What I, what I'd like to do is from here, and I haven't had a chance to talk with all the staff about exactly what we were putting together, but love to put together a better program and bring it back to you because it, it's not, it's not a free program. I mean, we're going to have to go out and get them licensed, we're going to have to go out there, set it up, we're going to have to have some type of recovery within the system and everything. But I, I all, I, I believe that as far as our regulatory side, that inspection makes a lot of sense to me, at least on the city side, to do that inspection, it should be near the, the meter pits and everything else. So it's not like we're entering on the property to get there. Uh, I think we can work out those details as well, too, but we just have to recover our technician time. We have to make sure that we have a s- established system of what they do and how they can correct the problem if there is a problem within there. But note that they, uh, the thing that we learned all the way through this, uh, backflow prevention is that it is an annual inspection that's required. And so anybody that has a, a separate irrigation system, anybody, and mo- most of our big people had the, had the bigger backflow preventions, we were tracking those very well. But I think this, the residential side is our most difficult side where we have the irrigation systems that are supposed to have the backflow prevention on them.
Thank you. Mr., I'm sorry, you want to go and say?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind, Mayor, thank you. Um, so that's why we brought this up, you know, a couple meetings ago, I asked Mr. Pischker of our 80,000 customers, how many would be affected by this? Because at first it was looking like only the people with a second irrigation meter would be affected, but then it was clarified by Mr. Pischker that it would be, anyone who has an irrigation system would also be impacted. So, you know, so any, basically any brand-new home that's being built, that's going to add to the list of, you know, six to eight thousand that we currently have. And then, you know, it just, it's not an expense that people are aware of, like, um, councilmember was mentioning. And if we have our own people doing this, I mean, that's, I mean, 8,000 times, I mean, that's 8,000 per year divided by, you know, people work 40 hours a week, okay, times, you get, you get 48, 48 weeks a year, I mean, we're, we're talking 33 per day that we're, the city's going to have to inspect, and that's going to be every year and over and over again. So that's going to compound, and we're adding new houses every, so that's also...
Yeah, what, what we would hope would happen, though, as well, too, is that the challenge we have right now is a, uh, there are, there are very few firms out there, plumbing firms, that have the license. And so they're not able, uh, they're the ones that can do the inspection, so they can charge higher pricing because they're the only, the only game in town. So the idea is that the city can step in there and we would hope that other plumbing firms would go out there and get that license, because the competition is what's going to bring the balance to the, the economics of the whole entire system. As best I can tell, the, uh, it, it, the average price out there is somewhere between $100 and $200 for somebody to come out and actually do just an individual one. What we would do with... What we would do without, what we would do within our system though is that, yeah, if that's a regulatory part of that job, the annual inspection would come up, we would go out with our inspectors. But that's why I think we need four to five of them at a time. That number could shift based upon how many, because I'm not even sure if we know, without going back through our records, that would have to be a part of the analysis to know how many of these units are out there as well too.
Councilwoman?
Mr. Neves, would we be able to, or would the utilities department be able to host a training? What I understand from backflow prevention certification is that this is not a complicated nor long process to receive the certification. If it's not too complicated or expensive, if the utilities department could offer that and make sure to invite all of our plumbing companies to take advantage of it, even if it's for a small fee, to be able to at least break even, then we could encourage more backflow prevention certification and do the same thing essentially, right? Create more people to be able to do it and then create the competition that we need to bring down these prices.
Yes, and councilmember, yeah, let me look into that because I think that we either have to send our people to where the testing is at, but maybe we can get the tester to come here and invite in anybody else that wishes to sit in. It doesn't have to just be the city. We can invite in the plumbing companies and everybody else, I think we could make that work really well. Happy to do it in our backyard rather than going up someplace away from God's country.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Uh, just to clarify, the reason why we require people to do this is to preserve the integrity of our entire water system for the entire city, because if one person doesn't do it... So, it's kind of like the spay and neutering program. We're putting it on the citizen to make sure that their animal's spayed. We've all seen how that's turned out over the years. And it's the same like issue where we don't have enough veterinarians and, you know, it's... I think that if the idea is to preserve the integrity of the water system, and we already have people going out to the meters, then I don't see why we don't just absorb this as a service, split the cost of providing the service over all the accounts. And I know nobody wants their account to go up, but if they're gonna have to pay a couple hundred dollars a year versus an extra ten, fifteen, twenty dollars a month, which might be a lot for, a lot of, it is a lot for a lot of people, but if we're trying to protect the integrity of our water, it's probably better for us to absorb the burden and charge for it than put it on every individual homeowner and then have to keep up with who did and who didn't.
Yeah, and Mayor and Mayor Protim, let me look through that because as best I can tell is that if you have a residential property that doesn't have an irrigation meter, you're not required to have a backflow prevention. And so, I don't know if we want to charge them for everybody else's backflow prevention or not. Let me get that, let me get that list together as to who all will be impact by this and where we want to go.
Well, Mayor, just to add one thing.
Go ahead.
If you see that spirit, Mr. Neves, I mean, we already do that when it comes to, for example, branch pickup. Everybody pays for the branch pickup when only certain residences use it. Same thing with the leaf collection. They hire a gardener, they do it themselves, they put the leaves out. We pick it up for free, it costs the city a lot of money, spread it out over all the accounts. We already do that, and we do that to, you know, for cleanliness and all that. So, if we really want to designate fairness in terms of who's using the service and they pay, then we would have to redo those other services as well, or make this a service that we do and spread it out.
No, and I appreciate what you're saying for that. What I, I guess what I'm suggesting though is, let me put together the list of all of our customer base and say, here's all the ones that will be impacted either way, because we can do it that way. We can, we can charge differently for, within that usage. We do it for our water as well, but we can, we can, I think that's where, with the councilmember's motion that he's getting ready to put on the table, just notice the work, we'll put together a good program as to how that can work.
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry, do you have one more thing, please?
So, I think something that hopefully will provide a little bit of information. So, I do have a backflow preventer. My backflow prevention device is behind a fence. It is not right by the irrigation meter. So, I think there's a little bit of confusion in the suggestion that you can go to the irrigation meter and immediately find out what that backflow prevention device is doing or be able to inspect it. In my case, it requires the employee to come and ask permission to gain entrance into my backyard. So, that's the complicating factor. And I understand where the hesitation is to take this on as a whole, because it does require that coordination. As a homeowner, I have gone to the plumbing company and gotten that inspection done. And that's something that I arrange, and that way I know when they're coming, I put my dogs away. It is, it is an expense for the homeowner, but as councilmember Peters was emphasizing is that we're trying to protect our public water supply system. But I think that's the difficulty and just this easy assumption that our city employees could take care of it. So, I'm grateful that you're gonna look into what can be done and what makes sense for the city.
Right, just to clarify this, Mayor, if I may. Yeah, Mr. Neves, I didn't want our employees to go in there and just go in there, do it. The person that owns the home that needs to get that backflow preventer inspected needs to call the city and make an appointment for us to go and authorizing us to do so already. So, my motion would be for you to come back to us within sixty days. Give us a proposal, maybe two or three ideas which you think we may be able to do to be able to establish the inspection division within the utility department.
Motion second, all in favor? Opposed, motion passed. Next item?
Mayor, um, point of order?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, councilmember, I know that your presentation is by the police department, and I did jot down the other police department items that are on the agenda. I don't know if it's possible after your item to hit the other ones.
Actually, it was my mistake that I, that was supposed to be fifty-seven B one. So, if we could bring up the Laredo Health Department for their presentation because they have an employee that's got a time sensitive issue. So, it was supposed to be fifty-seven B one.
Fifty-seven B one?
If I can just...
Yes, the motion?
Yes, if you don't mind changing my fifty-seven B two item to fifty-seven B one.
Second the motion.
Thank you.
Motion second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Mayor, if I can? Just to go back to the police items, I don't know if it's possible after all the items in queue are done, if we could pull up all the police items, because we've got a lot of police chiefs here to... Just, it's fifty-seven B two, fifty-seven E two, and thirty-six and thirty-eight.
We have a previous motion, and we were being seconded, so we'll do that motion after this.
Okay, Mayor.
First motion, all in favor? Opposed, motion passed. Now, your motion?
Yes, Mayor, just to, after we're done with the items, just to bring up fifty-seven B two, fifty-seven E two, and thirty-six and thirty-eight.
Motion second, all in favor? Opposed, motion passed.
Go ahead. Good evening, once again, Mayor and members of the council. Dr. Richard Chamberlain, New York Public Health Director for the record. As requested, we are going to be providing a overview of the programs and services that the Laredo Public Health Department offers to every member of the community. Thank you very much, Councilmember Segado, for bringing this to the council chamber floors. And I'm going to allow Ms. Adriana Morales, who formerly was our Public Health Promotion Supervisor, who is now our Harm Reduction Specialist, to provide the presentation.
Thank you. Good night, Mayor and members of the council and city managers. As mentioned by Dr. Chamberlain, my name is Adriana Morales. I am the Harm Reduction Specialist of the City of Laredo. And today I will do a presentation on the programs and services of the Health Department. So, first of all, as you know, the City of Laredo mission is to promote the welfare and security of the population, ensure dynamic and diverse property health workforce, and protect against the spread of disease and environmental hazards, and ensure access and safe to quality healthcare. You all know where we're located, commonly known as the City Clinic by everyone in the community, at twenty-six O'Hondy, City Avenue. So, our clinical services that we provide to the community are the following. We have the La Familia Clinic. This clinic is an onsite at the City Clinic, and it provides diagnosis, treatment, healthcare education, family planning services, as well as vasectomies. So, it does require for you to register and has a health society and income. But this is the service that we provide to the community as a clinic. Through the clinic, there's also laboratory services. These laboratory services are to test in the diagnosis of disease and conditions such as the high levels of AC one, that the tech diabetes. And also, we provide other type of services that includes pregnancy testing, oral blood testing in your stool. With the laboratory services and the testing, we have our Buenabida program. The Buenabida program is the most accessible testing that you will find, even compared to some of the insurances that the community in general has. Sometimes when you try to get this laboratory testing done through your insurance, actually your copay is higher than what we have here at the city. So, I highly recommend anybody that needs any type of testing or the doctors requiring some testing to help your income and your pocket, to look into the services and what the Health Department has to offer and what the Health Department charges. And you don't need a restriction to come in. And of course, we have different options, glucose testing there's here, kidney, and it goes all the way to red and white blood cells and platelets. So, we know this testing can be really expensive, but at the Buenabida program, to prevent diseases and to understand your own health and manage any other diagnosis that you have, we have this low-cost service. We have the clinical diseases. There's several programs in part in chart of it, one of the main ones. And what the Health Department is know the most about is immunizations. Everybody knows to go to the City Clinic for your vaccines, especially during back to school. That's where we have the highest number of clients that we see is during back to school. So, we have vaccines for, from bird all the way through adunhot. And you, there either are low cost or no cost, depending on your income and depending on your eligibility. So, we highly recommend anybody that is looking for vaccines to come our way. We most recently had a campaign on the measles vaccines. Some of you might be, might remember that, that we had a campaign where we actually had a drive for any individual that was eligible to receive the measles vaccines. And our next program is our program for sexually transmitted diseases such as chlamydia, gonorrhea, syphilis, and genital warts. So, we provide this testing also for HIV and syphilis. So, this program not only has the testing, but it also have a case management component and even a counseling service component to a program. It also has the HIV testing, a program that helps them with housing. So, this is a program that helps us also continue and follow up the individual that tests positive to provide case management and services throughout their disease. The hepatitis C program is to make sure and testing you for hepatitis C and also provide you the medication. The medication for hepatitis C can be really expensive. And also, it's really important that you continue with your medication to make sure that your liver is getting better and healing. So, this program helps us to identify who, where are the individuals with hepatitis C, which unfortunately, usually the community that tests positive for hepatitis C are those that use drugs intravenously or older population that receive a blood transfusion when back then, blood, when you donated blood, it wasn't tested for hepatitis. So, this is why, those are the two populations that we really go and promote to have them tested. The Epidemiology Department provides a lot of surveillance around the community. Some things like testing for mosquitoes, that's one of the things that the Epidemiology Department does, and other activities such as, some you might remember, like when we had that Zika outbreak, the Department was in charge of collecting the mosquitoes. And they also in charge of other testings throughout the community. The Epidemiology Department has a program specifically to autism and developmental disability monitoring, meaning that they want to know in how many children are diagnosed with autism. Right now, they finished already with the two Laredo districts, ELASD and UASD, to know who are the children that are being diagnosed with autism, and they're gonna follow them throughout. And this is a surveillance monitoring program that Laredo, one of the very few grants that were distributed throughout the country, Laredo was the one, one of the ones that was able to acquire this grant. Thank you. The TV elimination program, tuberculosis, this is something that we work really close with our sister cities, Laredo. We actually have a tuberculosis by national, and by national meetings with our partners in Mexico. But specifically with TV elimination program is so that we know that tuberculosis is very contagious, and we need to make sure that as soon as there's a case, we treat it and we follow it, not only to that, but also through contact. Who the has this person have contact with to make sure that them are also tested for tuberculosis in order to prevent the spread and a possible pandemic epidemic. Our environmental health services, this one, the Health Department is very well known for it because this is the ones that, if you're a restaurant, or if you want to have a food truck, or if you want to just go outside and sell, because, you know, there's, that's a way families can bring income, we provide the food handling training. They learn how to cook properly, how to clean their utensils properly, and prevents diseases such as salmonella, or such as, you know, those diseases that you might get from eating raw food or food that's not properly prepared.
Can I stop you real quick? Councilmember Segado, is there a motion intended with this item, or was it just gonna be a presentation?
It's a presentation, so... It's a presentation so that Laredo Public Health can inform the community of all the multitude of services that they provide. I attended the Webb County Domestic Violence Coalition meeting, and I heard this presentation there. And I was so impressed at the magnitude of what our Laredo Public Health does for citizens of the, for residents of Webb County and for our city. And I thought that this would be a good forum for people to be made aware of all of the services that are available. Because I think, like you've mentioned, the lab services, this is something that's low cost and accessible for our community. So, you know, so many people, and this is from my own personal experience with my husband's office, so many people get prescriptions for detailed lab services, for things that are important for their primary care, for additional care, and they, they find it a financial strain to have to get those prescriptions filled because their insurances don't cover it because of some other measure that just makes it more expensive. Laredo Public Health has this amazing laboratory where it's available to the public at a low cost. I think this is a great way to showcase how much our Public Health Department does for the community.
Councilmember Segado, I was asking because I feel that unfortunately, not a lot of people watch council meetings, even though they're the most, you know, entertaining thing on TV right now. But I was gonna say that maybe they can, because it's a very well put together presentation, maybe the PIO from Health Department can incorporate this somehow on social media, and we can highlight it on our, on our main website and also on our social media so that it could reach more people like over, over a longer period of time.
I, of course, our PIO, I think that's LS management, I think that's a great idea.
So, I'd like to make that motion if you'll accept it.
I don't believe we can.
Mr. Neves, can we, can we instruct, or can we support as council the efforts that they made to, to make this presentation available to the public in a PIO format and with all this informative, with the flyer and all the numbers? And we can broadcast it on the city's social media pages, though, you know, because I don't want it to just end here, I would like for more people to see it. So, I don't know if you want to continue, but I just wanted to make that motion or that suggestion that we make this more available. So, I'll make the motion.
So, just let me, yes.
There's no motion available for this item?
The item was without action, but I do appreciate the efforts. And I think, I think our management team would take a directive.
I think Dr. Chamberlain has more than willing to highlight this.
Mayor Protim, Mayor Protim and City Council. The Health Department and the city administration wants to make sure that this information is available for all of the public, and we intend to place this out there on our social media and take care of this, all right? You're welcome.
No, no, that's fine, if you can please continue. And thank you, sir.
The Environmental Health Services, as mentioned, some of the places establishment that you might not know of, but tattoos and body piercing, even the tire businesses... that you might not know, not know of, but tattoos and body piercing, even the tire businesses, smoking regulations, the environmental health services is the person, the department in charge of that. We have here some information on the different types of, in this case, in these slides specifically to food vendors. We have behavioral health services, this one, Juntos for Better Health. This is the behavioral health, mental health program that is counseling and telesecurity. They have a case management team and they travel around town at least twice a week to see them out, providing health screenings. And they also have a community pantry for everyone that's their clients. The AOT program, the Assistant Opagement Treatment is court ordered specifically, so all of the patients that they have, the clients that they have, have been court ordered to prov, to make sure that they have intensive case services. But these patients or clients specifically, they have a serious diagnosis for mental health and they also have a history of incarceration. So those two components is what makes for a referral to the AOT program. Health promotion and nutrition. So those services, Healthy Living Viviendo Mejor, this is one of our most sought out program class. So it's a class to help you, if you're prediabetic or diabetic, to manage your diabetes through sessions of classes and also free classes such as Zumba. You have a walking club every Thursday morning at the mall and they also provide different other, like class cooking classes. And also before and after you are in this program, you get a blood test to make sure that you're learning, you're retaining, and you are making those healthy choices and changing those habits. The obesity prevention program, this program is one of the ones that organized, let's say with collaboration with the Parks Department. If you've seen the signage that they have to the trails, this is a program that's, that's the one that brings that in. And also, this is a program that brings in Visciclobia, which is an event that we're trying to do annually. This year will be our third year for Visciclobia, which is a, an event where we close the streets to have the community bring out their bikes and promote physical activity. Healthy Texas and Nice and Baby, this is a program that one of their main focuses is to have businesses become mother-friendly. We know the benefits of breastfeeding, but sometimes some mothers, when they come back, go, go back to the work, they don't have a space to breast pump. And this program encourages the businesses to have a space that is not the restroom for mothers to breast, to pump so that they can take that breast milk to their children. As we know, breastfeeding and breast milk, it's a way to, a nutrition component, but it also, research has shown that it helps with preventing obesity. WIC Services, this is one of our biggest programs. And this is a program that provides women and children with nutritional components such as vouchers to go buy food while they do screens to everyone that's part of this program, from newborns to, to, to three-year-olds, to five-year-olds. So these are the many locations that you will, you will find a WIC clinic. As you can see, we are all throughout the community. Animal Care Services are our newest addition to the health department and we're really excited to have them onboard. So this is the program that's in charge of protecting and even investigate animal cruelty cases as well as provide the spay and neuter or the cat family services to decrease overpopulation of different animals, like dogs or cats. So this is the place that you would go to unfortunately, you have to surrender an animal or if you want to adopt one, this is a place that you want to visit. Some additional services that we have, the Family Nurse Partnership, this is for moms or first-time moms pregnant that are, are matched or paired with a nurse throughout the first three, two years of the pregnancy or all the way to the, their baby's two years old. So with you through all this time, you have a nurse that will educate you and be there with you throughout these first two years.
Great.
The Children and Youth with Special Healthcare Needs, this is a program that helps those that have, or the family members of children that have autism, Down Syndrome, Attention Deficit Disorder, cerebral palsy, these healthcare needs that parents may not know much about. There's some new diagnoses, they don't know where to turn to. This provides case management and provides support such as respite and one of the ages, you can be up to the age of 21 actually. And if you have cystic fibrosis, they help you until throughout your life. This program has also another component on the all kinds of my master plans that Dr. Chamberlain and Ms. Martinez have championed. And I don't know if he's ever talked about it, but it helps the community bring in, maybe a little bit, help the community understand the needs of, of children with special needs and help them also with acquiring some things such as job placements.
Great.
Pile statistics, where you get your birth certificates or your death certificates?
I definitely think that the health department does an amazing job and we, you know, we're, that's one of the reasons why we're trying to, you know, provide more, right? And hopefully we will be able to add to the list of services. But I think that this is something the public, in case they're not aware of, definitely benefit from the lead.
And this is for the emergency preparedness. The health department has every year a preparedness exercise. One of them was, for example, the tabletop that they recently have where they have a mock scenario and invite different departments of the community and organizations to help in organize a plan in case of an emergency. Alongside with that, we have the Operation Border Health Preparedness, that is the same scenario, but in this case, we invite the community to receive free services. The OBHP for this year is going to be a Christian middle school. We're going to provide free services in the last week of July, free services such as dentals, vision, vaccines, health screenings, you name it, will be there Christian elementary, Christian middle school, the last week of July, providing these, these services. And it is a mock scenario and for the health department to be prepared in case of an emergency. This is our newest program that we have, the Alzheimer's Disease and Related Menchance. This is a grant that we recently were awarded. Unfortunately, Laredo is one of the highest cities with Alzheimer's diagnosis. We're right there with El Paso. So this is a really good program that we were finally, we were able to, to obtain, to bring awareness, especially early detention. And they focuses on going to the doctors and have your doctor do a screening as early as you're as age 40. And last, the opioid abandonment program, the harm reduction. And this is where with the help of the Red Centers, we've been able to have Narcan cabinets accessible to the community. If you want to buy a Narcan, it costs around $50 if you go to Walgreens or if you go to, to any pharmacy, but we have Narcan for free in all of these locations. We're planning on expanding on two more locations in the coming months. So I just want to wrap up. We are always looking for grant-funded opportunities. Most of our programs are grant-funded. Some of our funders are the CDC, SAMSA, Methodist Health and Ministries. So if any of you know of any grant opportunities that you feel that the health department qualifies, please send it our way. We work really hard on apply for as many grants as possible, so meet as many grants as possible with the optimism that we'll have these programs and services to continue better serve our community.
Thank you. Does anybody from council have any questions?
Yes, I just, thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to, I could comment on every program that you offer. I am so impressed with the services that the city provides for citizens. I think, again, just my knowledge from being married to a doctor, nothing special, is that surveillance is so important here on the border because on the border, we see diseases that, and, and medical conditions that just don't happen if you go farther inland. We, we have a community that abuts a, a different type of, of medical service, right? In a different country. And so my husband has already, always said that there's so many interesting cases here on the border. And while it's intellectually stimulating for him, I think we need a strong public health department to keep our community medically safe and, and to continue to provide these needed services for an underserved community that struggles to attract the medical, the quantity of medical professionals that we need. The quality, we have a very good quality, but the quantity is, is something that we struggle with. So thank you for your efforts to keep our community healthy and safe. They're very much appreciated.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember, for the item and also look forward to seeing that marketing stuff hopefully this week.
We'll get it up.
Hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to bring up item 36, I believe was in the queue. So I know we have some representatives here from LJA, so we'll jump into that one and we'll move on with the rest of the police department items. This is under police item. However, we did just talk about this at the MPO. It was very, very thorough. So looking forward to, would you like to present? Hold on, we don't have quorum. Don't, don't say anything. All right, we got quorum now. Thank you. Thank you for waiting. I know it's been a long night. I know you have to drive back to San Antonio, but you know, appreciate the efforts, definitely, you know, look forward to this presentation. Hopefully it's not too long. I know it's been a long night.
We'll keep it brief. Thank you, Councilwoman, for the record. I'm Melissa Motamayor, representing the Webb County, City of Laredo Regional Billy Authority. I'm also representing Chairman Jed Brown. And I'm sorry, he had to, had to leave tonight, but on his behalf, we're presenting our Webb Laredo Vision Zero Plan. As you know, a little background, a couple of years ago, we applied for a Federal Highway Administration federal grant. We brought back to the community a $2 million grant to prepare and develop this, this Vision Zero Safety Action Plan. We identified approximately $33 million worth of projects. It's not very often that we can identify millions of dollars worth of projects. There are funds available for Federal Highway Administration for the next phase implementation. Jason Rodriguez, who's here with me tonight, who was the project manager for this, for this study, met virtually with Federal Highway Administration staff. They have verified that the funds are available. I met in person in DC during the Laredo days. I met with Federal Highway Administration in person. They verified that yes, the funds are available, they just need for us to apply. So the $33 million, you know, we've identified some TechDOT on-system projects, we've identified some City of Laredo off-system projects. Now, we just need to identify a 20% local match. There are opportunities to, to cover some of this match with some fee in lieu of opportunities. Chairman Brown is extremely committed to helping the City of Laredo perhaps leverage some of that 20% match. He's working with Mr. Ramon Chavez in identifying through those projects and of course, you know, looking at that, at leveraging that 20% match. Of course, you know, how much of the 20% match can be alleviated with the RMA's assistance? That's going to be a decision that the RMA board needs to make, but Chairman Brown is working with, with Mr. Chavez on that. We're also working with Texas Department of Transportation as they identify their 20% match, a funding source for their 20% match. So the presentation tonight by, by Jason Rodriguez is 18 months worth of work with the community to develop this Vision Zero Plan, which we know is going to assist in saving lives. We ask for you tonight to adopt this plan as your own. And then Chief, did you want to say anything before Jason starts his presentation? And you know, Chief was instrumental in his assistance as well, like to recognize him. Chief, please.
Just, just real quick, Chief Rodriguez, Chief Rodriguez for the record. When we saw this presentation and we heard about this presentation as to how they're put this plan into action and the objectives that it, that it has, we strongly agreed with them because it aligns directly with what we want to do from now to the future. So this calls for by 2040 to have zero fatalities in our public streets. So we're very well aligned with that, but we want to reach that goal, you know, by 2026, right? So that's, that's our plan, that's our main objective. I know it's hard, you know, and like I told our partners that it, it's, it's, it's hard to, to, to invest on, 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 on this type of items completely with the resources that we have. But this causes for us to work smarter. And I can announce today, well, I'm very happy to announce that year today, we only had three fatalities. I know three's a lot, but last year, year today, we were already at seven. So that is a big decline in fatalities just with the working smarter. The approach that we have is even though we only have 13 bicycle guys compared to 2008 that we used to have 26, 22? That's 22, that's almost half of our motorcycle cops out in the street. We are also, we're working a lot smarter now, moving them in the direction that we need to move them to make sure that we attack those areas and we continue to see those crashes and we see those heat maps. So that has contributed to this decline in our fatalities and our crashes, which are also down. So pretty much in support of Vision Zero and this is why we wanted to put it in today's agenda and see if we can adopt the same plan.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. For the record, I'm Jason Rodriguez with LJ Engineering, also representing the RMA. So I'm going to give you a very brief overview of what's in the plan. I think everybody should have a copy of this. So we'll just kind of go through it. One thing I will say is that an important part of this was the, the robust outreach and engagement that we had. That also was paired with a lot of folks in leadership positions as folks have mentioned that were actually at the table and helping us actually put this together. So I'll just kind of start at the very beginning. One thing I'll point out is that this study does look at the period between 2018 and 2022. That's because that was the data set available when we started. As the chief mentioned, there's, he has updated data since then. So this is still progressing, but this is just pointing out some of the crash statistics. So there were 119 fatalities and serious injuries in just 2022 and over 40,000 crashes of any kind over this five-year period. Did, did find out that the top contributing factors of these were speeding, drug and alcohol impairment and seat belt usage. And the solutions that we put in this plan basically demonstrate a commitment to safety, equity, education, and resources. Just to give you an overview of the schedule that we had, that 18-month schedule Melissa alluded to before, I want to point to just three points on here, the A, B, and C that you see there. The A was the kickoff in, in February of last year, actually where we had an event kicking off this effort. Soon after that, this council actually adopted, along with the MPO Policy Committee and the RMA Board, that pledge to reach zero fatalities and serious injuries by 2040. That sent us moving forward. We had workshops, we had an open house, received lots of comments and lots of input, had lots of help from the health department with that outreach. And then we had help from, from the chief, from Mr. Chavez, TechDOT, the MPO, and actually putting together the plan that took us to be where we're, we're at today, to actually adopt the completed plan that we've done here. And as Melissa alluded to before, the next step is to go in to C and that's actually to, to start implementing and getting these projects funded. One thing I would like to point out is that while the plan is here and we're at this adoption point, we still do have some work to do through the summer. We're currently engaged with United Independent School District to kind of further define the rural bus stop component that is just outside of City of Laredo, but included in the plan. And then we're also working with Laredo Independent School District where we'll be doing walk, walk audits of six of their campuses to really kind of understand the safety. That will also result in a methodology that can be used by either school district, the city, TechDOT, to do the same thing. Again, just to highlight, this is a list of participants that we had throughout this process. We had a couple of different committees, a couple of different touchpoints, and then we had lots of sort of one-on-one engagement as well. So I do want to thank the participation of everybody that was, was able to be involved there. And then what you see here is the capital plan. So there's an action plan component and a capital plan. The actions obviously are set out items that identify sort of who would be in charge and, and what are the actions that need to be taken. But then this is the capital plan and this is that $33 million program that Melissa was talking about. I'll point out that one through 16 are roadways. They're both TechDOT and City of Laredo, so it's about 20 million in TechDOT projects, 10 million in Laredo projects. I should point out that downtown streets, which are in flux, are part of this as well. Numbers one through five there on that list. And then the rural bus stops I spoke of with UISD are there at the bottom of the list. So that's kind of what, what we're, what we're seeing here on this particular map. And as Melissa mentioned, we're, we're actively working on how to put together the funding to actually move forward with implementation. When you get into the plan, this is just one example, so that entire list I just showed you. When you get into the plan, this is just one example, so that entire list I just showed you of sixteen different corridors has this level of information and detail. Um, if you want even more detail than this, we have an appendix that's available on visionzereweblaredo.com, um, that sort of gets into the nuances of what happened in each corridor, um, from the crash data, which led to the recommendations that are being made for each corridor. So, you sort of see this breakdown. It has recommendations, it has the types of crashes, contributing factors, and then, of course, the costs associated with that particular corridor. So, with that, I will, um, just say thank you, um, and, and also I want to thank, uh, the, the, the Chief and, and Mr. Chavez and, and Chairman Diva and, and all their staff, um, for really contributing very actively, uh, to this project, and, um, I think it's, it's resulted in a very successful, uh, plan. So, thank you all very much, and we'll take any questions.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you so much. What's your name again, sir?
Uh, Jason Rodriguez.
Okay, yeah, you should be like a podcast host or radio. Great voice.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so thirty-three million, um, twenty, twenty percent match of, you know, there'd be six-point-six million roughly from, but would that just have to be from the city? Because I noticed there's, you know, like, some things that are in the county, like, and it's the, Laredo, Webb County. Is, is there talk about kind of partnering with that local?
We're, uh, I, I would say that, at least from the RMA's perspective, we are all about partnering. Um, so absolutely. Uh, and to clarify, the match, um, we always say local match, it's just non-federal. So, any non-federal funds that we can, uh, use, we can use to match that.
And would that match need to all be committed to, at the same, in the same year, or would be gradually over time? Or it's like, you, you kind of need the match, local match to figure out?
So, so there, there is, uh, basically the, the federal funds would need to be expended within five years of receiving them. Um, so, over that time period, and the way also these funds work, I should say, is they are reimbursed. So, um, basically, the, the local entity would, would, uh, front the, the money and then get reimbursed by FHWA and whatever partners are available. It's, it's kind of similar to the way that it's been working with the, the plan.
It's not upfront, so it's not the twenty percent upfront. So, expenditures are made on a monthly basis, and, you know, invoices come in, and so they're, you know, they're reimbursed on a monthly basis.
But then the other eighty percent is we have to find money to put forward to then get reimbursed as well?
Right.
So, okay.
And but, but, you know, FHWA is very timely in their reimbursements, and so they pay, you know. As long as we have the invoicing to prove, um, the charges, they typically reimburse every thirty days.
Okay. So, what's the timeline for like the next steps of getting this implemented?
The application for implementation, Jason.
Right, so the implementation grant, um, for this fiscal year, um, the, that, uh, notice of, of funding opportunity has, uh, come out, and, uh, those applications are due June twenty-sixth. We have a couple of interim deadlines that are just like, prove that you have this, and it meets our checklist, and then there's another, um, deadline for asking technical questions. But the, the, June twenty-sixth is when the applications are due.
You, you, you'll submit that, or you need?
Yes, we're, we're actually, we, we are, our team is set up and, and, um, prepared to be able to submit that as well, um.
Anything you need from the city, of course, please let us know.
Do you want to also have the breakup of the, the TechDOT project matches, roughly four million?
Oh, right, yeah, yeah. So, uh, like I said, the, the twenty million TechDOT is about four, and then city is about ten, so it's about two match, um, roughly, um, so that's.
Mayor, I, during the MPO, we talked about the figure for city projects being ten million.
Right.
And then our match would be two million, and then, um, I have a statement, um, here from Mr. Brown, who, um, who basically says that, uh, that he's confident that the RMA, RMA Board will keep moving this, uh, Vision Zero forward from the Safety Action Plan, and, um, without the implementation, he's worried that the work will kind of just be, you know, be lost. And, um, he's looking forward to having less accidents and saving lives. Um, he would have to, I guess, get the RMA to, you know, agree to a match, but we, we were kind of negotiating at MPO that we would try to go fifty-fifty, one million from the RMA, one million from, from the city, and then push, push for the city projects for ten million. So, I thought that was a pretty fair deal. Um, but, uh, uh, just thank you for the work that you all, or all did. I know that tonight, we do need to, um, as written here is basically just for us to approve the re- resolution, but, um, uh, I don't know if, um, you know, how the, how management would, um, would, I guess, I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution and adopt the plan as presented.
Alright, motion and second? Discussion, Mayor, please.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I, thank you. Um, so, in, in, thank you so much for this. I remember when it was being discussed in the public library, when this was all shut down.
Yes.
That was a long time ago, right? Um, I, I am so impressed with how comprehensive it is, and the, that it is data-driven with all the detail is a tremendous, um, compliment to your work ethic, and, and thank you for putting it together. I have a question about the, the TechDOT project. So, um, especially, uh, there's on Guadalupe Street, which is high up on the list, there is an identified project that, um, because of, with the, uh, assistance of Laredo Police Department and our own departments, we've, uh, I met early on with, with TechDOT, and they had agreed to put a traffic signal there because of pedestrian traffic crossing in a crazy place by the HEB without a light. So, um, if it is already identified in the TechSTOP plan, and I was told that it is, it's supposed to be going forward, right? It's supposed to happen the, the end of this year. Um, does that, can get, that gets swept in? I mean, there's already money for it. Um, I don't, how do you, how do you see that working? Because the, 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 the money is there. TechDOT has told me that the money's there, that it's already in their plan. So, where, where can it align with a, a, a grant, um, implementation? I think it would benefit TechDOT. Maybe it gives them more money to do other projects if they can take advantage of this.
One thing, so that, that's definitely the right way to think, you know, if we've got something programmed, it's like, well, that can count if it's in the corridor.
Right.
The one thing I will caution us is, it depends on the funding source. Um, so if they are already using a funding source, that's an eighty-twenty federal local match. Um, with, our, our match has to be non-federal. So,
Okay.
it, it's kind, it's kind of a wash in that case. Um, but if it's, if it's a more federal or state, uh, basically non, I'm sorry, more local or state, uh, funding source, then that is definitely something that we, and we've been having those discussions to find those, those pieces that, you know, are represented by, by a dollar amount.
And we just met with TechDOT this morning, and we had that discussion.
Yeah.
And so, you know, deciphering if it's HSIP, which is state funds, and, you know, it's, it's these types of, you know, kind of research that we're doing right now, and then discussions with FHWA. We want to make sure that we get credit for projects like this. Um, so, these are the questions that we've kind of identified to have a discussion with FHWA to ensure that we get credit for that Guadalupe, Chula project.
Okay, so, you know, in the discussions with TechDOT, and because this was so important for my district, I had offered, uh, some of the funds that, that, my discretionary funds that I have control with to, for TechDOT, to encourage them to, you know, to match whatever they needed to get this project done. So, that, that is still, the reason why I'm pushing on it is because I know those plans are drawn up. When you talk about shovel-ready projects, that is, uh, a, a positive for them to receive the funding. And, and like you said, I just don't want to miss the, the opportunity to get something in the queue, get it credited to where it needs to be credited, and move forward with it perhaps more quickly.
Uh, what I would say is, in cases where, um, let's say they're already using a funding source that is an eighty-twenty match, so it doesn't really help this, what it would do is eliminate the cost of that signal improvement from this. So, it could, I mean, it's still a way to pay for it, it's just that the ask that we have would be lower. So, we're, what we're trying to do right now, and that's part of our, our discussion this morning, is to identify all of those items that TechDOT or the city have already, um, Identis Salinas is, is an example of a street that, you know, there's some plans, there's some funding. So, maybe we would step back what we're asking for that street. Um, and so that, uh, we're, we're trying to basically refine that, that thirty-three million dollar number to, to account for these types of improvements that are already programmed.
Okay.
So.
Alright, well, if, if it turns out that you need a little extra funding for these specific projects, I am very interested, because what you've identified are, are real needs to, uh, make it safer for the residents, especially in my district, to cross the street, to get to where they're going. And I'm very interested in seeing it move forward. Thank you.
Mayor, yes, go ahead and comment. Mr. Rodriguez, first of all, thank you all for everything you've done for this project. We, we're certainly going to be, uh, you know, supporting it, of course. Uh, Vision Zero, having zero deaths or fatalities in our city is going to be something wonderful for the Webb County itself. Uh, question for you, and kind of a concern. Our Police Department has seventy officers missing, or more they should be now. I just want to make sure that you're not going to inundate them or task them with putting more officers out in certain areas, because, as you know, they're already tasked to do a lot. And they do miracles with, with the amount of, of force that they have now, right? Boots on the floor. Um, so, we just want to make sure that that's not, if adopting this, not going to force them to try to get more and more people there, because, like I say, they, they, they truly, truly work miracles with the force that they have out there now. Uh, the men and women out there on, 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 on the streets, uh, make things happen. Or, you know, we're the safest city in, in, in the state of Texas. Uh, I think we're still ranked in the top twenty in the United States, uh, which is wonderful for a city, and especially a border town. I just want to make sure, you know, and just because they're understaffed, you know, by over seventy people now. So, just want to make sure implementing this is not going to, to task them with even more to do.
Right. So, I, I don't want to speak for the Chief, but I will say that the Chief and his command staff were involved in the development of the action plan. And so, we took into account what they were already wanting to do, what they had already discussed with council, um, and that was incorporated into the action plan component. Um, another thing I will add is that on an annual basis, I mean, if you adopt this plan, this is your plan. Um, and so on an annual basis, there's always opportunity to amend it, to say, hey, well, we're going to go out and make sure with the public that this change or this added thing is something that's needed. It'll be data-driven and that sort of thing. And those changes can be made, so, uh, the council would certainly have the flexibility to do that.
I'm sorry, to, a follow-up, because you just made that little light go off in my head. Um, during the MPO meeting, we were talking about this, and just after that, I got calls from certain people, um, businesses on Del Mar specifically, stating how much this would affect their businesses. So, now you're stating this, and of course, saving lives is of utmost importance, but business is very important to our city as well. So, now that you're saying that we can change it on a yearly basis, is that going to be possible to do? Let's just say, we have a lot of the community members coming in, or a lot of business people coming in and saying, this is going to affect, it happened on Saunders, right, on fifty-nine. We got a lot of complaints coming from there when those, those barriers were being built there. Uh, are, is that possible to do once this is implemented?
So, uh, as, as part of the implementation process, we would have to go through an environmental, uh, process, especially with the federal funds. So, that would be hashed out during that phase.
Okay.
Um, another thing that, you know, we, we could, uh, we could consider is that, a- as we're going through this, I would just say that any, any amendments like that really ought to be, um, data-driven and publicly vetted. Um, that would be my only sort of recommendation. In order to keep it to where, um, i- if it starts to become just more localized, and it's like, you know what, we don't really need that, those are all decisions that can be made at the local level, but then it may, uh, start to make certain federal funding opportunities, uh, less available.
Available.
Um, of, of course, we, uh, we, we, I can't predict what, what the next authorization will, will have. I, I think currently, this program is through FY twenty-seven. So, after that, it could be different on the federal level, but, um, that, that would be my only caution, um, is, is, we want to also keep things eligible to get paid for.
Sure, absolutely.
It, it's a give-and-take on, on Saunders, and I was involved in that project
Right.
years ago. Um, you know, it has to make sense for the community. As you know, you know, we ended up having some median cuts in front of the HEB, in front of that other shopping center, conservation, and, you know, in front of the HEB. So, it has to make sense for the community, for the business owners, and so if median cuts have to be installed to make sense for the business owners, for the traveling public, you know, that's part of the public involvement process. So, that's, that's the same process that we'll take, you know, with these projects as well. That was a different funding source.
Yes, yes, it was, it was.
But, same process.
Right, right. Thank you. Chief, I'm sorry, could you come up to the, the lectern, please? And let us know about, uh, how it's going to affect you and, and, and your force out on the street?
So, just, uh, Chief Rodriguez, Chief Rodriguez for the record, just, just as everything that comes our way, you know, we, we're going to have to provide some resources to alleviate the problems that we currently have. And, and one of the, the bigger problems that we have, and we've talked about it here in this council, that, you know, our crashes, our fatalities, it, it's one of our priorities. The other thing, the other priorities that we have is our continued shots fired, and of course, our domestic violence issue. So, there's multiple things that we try and make sure that we, you know, create some, some direction and be sure that we work smarter, right, not, or harder, but it gets, gets very difficult when you don't have, you know, the amount of people that, you know, that you need. But for this type of, 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 um, priority that we have for, for traffic control and things, uh, that we're trying to prevent, we obviously have to work smarter. And what I mean by smarter is data-driven. We cannot just go out there and make sure that, hey, we're just providing presence. Is if we're going to put our motorcycle officer somewhere, is because that's where the problem is. And we're working a lot with predictive analysis, uh, even when we're talking about crime. Um, we no longer just send our units, now we're get, grabbing units from different districts to make sure that we put the units where we need them. And I can give you an example. A downtown area, a downtown area, our statistics right now are extremely low, uh, compared to last year. And there was some, some, some things that we did, you know, that I won't share in public, but there's some things that we did that we made sure that we addressed the problem to its core, and again, working smarter, not harder, right? But at the same time, it does take resources, but we're moving from different areas that doesn't, that's not affecting the community immediately at this point.
Right.
Toward the, the area that's affecting the community immediately at this point, so.
It's just, you're very well noted, Chief. I'm sorry to interrupt, I don't mean to interrupt, but, um, you know, your budget is very restricted. And, and we're talking budget already, you know, we're already discussing that, and of course, your budget comes up plenty, and so does the Fire Department. Um, and you know how restricted you are now, and what you're going to be like next year. So, I just want to be sure that you're not spread even thinner than what you already are, and still provide the protection that you provide for us now on a daily basis.
Oh, we are spread right now, and I can tell you that.
Absolutely.
We, we keep on talking about this, right, but I know that you understand where we're at. Uh, but at the same time, my focus, and our focus as an administration for the Police Department is to continue providing the service as best as we can. And so, yes, uh, we have our priorities. Uh, but more than anything is that we need to focus on, on the things that right now is of utmost importance, right? And one is life, uh, uh, make sure that we continue to prevent, you know, homicides, traffic fatalities, and things like that. Um, and then, then there goes the rest, right? But I think, uh, right now, we are stretched, and I can say it, uh, uh, over and over again. But we, we have to work with what we have, and again, at the end of the day, we're now trying to pile up things with this, uh, type of, uh, program, is things that we already have in our objectives to make sure that we continue our efforts to, you know, reducing the amount of fatalities in our city.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Thank you, Chief.
Uh, Mayor, from me?
Yes.
Uh, Legal, is it, um, I don't think the way that the agenda item is written allows us to talk about the funding match or anything like that. Am I correct? So, I think right now we have the motion to adopt the plan. I think we would need another, um, a, agenda item at, another time to talk about the match and the funding and all that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're limited to what we can approve tonight, and we have a motion on the floor to approve the plan. And thank you for your work and everything. Um, what I like about the plan also is that a lot of it has to do with, uh, like, reducing crashes by distracted driving, improving intersections, like signage, lighting, stuff like that, that are probably things that we needed to do anyways, right? So, um, it's just more of a, a data-driven, like I know some of my colleagues would like, like that, like that, um, data-driven, right, improvements. So, um, thank you for all your hard work, and I think it's on us to try to figure out, um, how to get that match, and then work hopefully with the RMA so we can do that fifty-fifty, unless they want to do sixty-forty or pay the whole thing, I mean. We can have that at another time, but, um, Mayor, we had already made the motion at the.
Alright, there is some motion?
Yeah, in the second.
Alright.
About what we said?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I think, um, I, just to add maybe a little bit of context, I think what's so impressive about this plan, when Chief Rodriguez is talking about his limited resources, and, and we do appreciate the work that you do with the resources that you have to keep us safe, and, and I think that's been proven over and over again. And thank you for your, your department officers for that. But I think what this plan does is allows infrastructure to be, it's, um, monies that mostly will be paid for from an outside source, but that infrastructure is going to assist the Police Department in reducing those crashes, and assist the officers in making sure that our community is safe. So, we should see less crashes, and we should see less fatalities and serious injuries. And that should relieve pressure on some of the traffic, um, uh, duties that you need to send your officers to, because now the infrastructure of the roads is going to assist in keeping the streets safe. And so, thank you again for this plan, uh, at eighty. And so I thank you again for this plan, uh, at eighty twenty, I think it's very cost effective. For the investment that the city will make in order that we can have that outcome of zero fatalities and. Decrease serious injuries and make our city safer and give our police department a little bit of help in that effort. So thank you.
Thank you, there is a motion, any second? Second, all in favor? Both, motion pass. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item was.
Fifty seven B? B two, fifty seven B two.
Request for a presentation by Laredo Police Department on their current efforts. To prevent domestic violence in the community and also on the services that they provide to victims. And again, this came up at the Webb County Domestic Violence Coalition Meeting. Um, and it was my my gratitude to the department and on behalf of the city. For all the efforts that you have, I know, um, that. The services provided to victims of sexual assault. The future is to increase those services and, um, hopefully to create a new space. For those services to be housed in in a new headquarters or a remodel, whatever ends up happening with the bond. Um, but I thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, so thank you, and again, this is Chief Mia Rodriguez for the record. Uh, couple of sta- statistics before we get into what we're doing with the, uh, the domestic violence issue in our city. Uh, just last year, we had about seven thousand, we answered seven thousand six hundred and six calls for domestic violence. As everybody knows, the domestic violence is not only the most violent, uh, for within the household, but also. The most dangerous one for our for our city police officers, so seven thousand six hundred and six calls. Out of those, two thousand one hundred and forty two were assigned cases to our special victims unit. Out of those, a thousand two hundred and fifty one arrests by patrol and four hundred and twenty two arrests by our special victims unit. And so year to date, uh, we are at two thousand two on the first quarter. And so as you can see, the numbers don't go down, but, uh, maybe just advise everybody that in this type of crime. Um, we do not want the numbers, when we see the numbers decreasing, there's a problem, right, and because we we do know that. We want more people to report, and this is what we're trying to make sure that we create that awareness, and I'll go a little bit more in depth. Into that in my next in my next slides, but year to date, as you can see, our 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 arrests. Our assigned cases are already at eight hundred and forty five, our arrests are already at a four hundred and thirty seven and a hundred and forty six arrests by our detectives. So just with this, uh, taking into consideration the amount of cases that we get every year. You can see for yourself, it's a it's a big problem, so I know that we talked about that this more and more and more because of what happened in the shooting with Bannock. At Bannock, but this is pretty much a pretty much overview of what we deal with every year. What we're doing, uh, this is something that we already, uh, engaged in, I I know Dr. Perez is still here. We've been working very hard with LISD to incorporate this, because when when. After Bannock and before Bannock, we were already trying to figure out, this has already happened since last year. What we've been trying to figure out is where the gaps are at, and the gaps is that we continue to put things on Facebook, we continue to put things on brochures. And the demographic that is being victimized is no longer that demographic that you can kind of ga- engage in in those social media settings. Or with a brochure, what this demographic is a generation Z, millennials. And so what we want to do is we want to make sure that we catch them at a very early age, and this is our first, uh. Program that we're doing with our our LISD, and we thank Laredo ISD for being, uh, for opening the doors. For us to do this, uh, so far, we've engaged parents, we've engaged administration. We've ju- we've done two presentations already with, uh, two of the classrooms. What we're gonna do, we're gonna be going into our our middle schools and our high schools. To make sure that we talk about all this material that's here, and we're talking about sexting, publishing intimate visual material. Harassment, red flexing in a relationship, violence and and of course criminal consequences to those that are committing those crimes. And so this was very hard to get approved by the administration, because there's a lot of things that that go with that. Uh, with LISD, you cannot just go and present a material without getting approval, so finally we got it approved and it's moving forward. And what we want to do with this, we want to engage our youth. It starts there, we want to make sure that they understand that, you know, being called toxica is not funny. Being called toxica, it's a problem, so all those things, we're we're touching on all those items and making sure that we address that. Uh, in our middle schools and high schools, the other thing that we're trying to do just to move a little bit faster, but as against Women Act. We get, uh, this grant thirty thousand dollars, uh, this year, and we've gotten this 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 money in the past years, and what we do with this money is all training. Our spec- special victims unit, some of our patrol officers, and of course, our coordinators. Uh, we use this money to continue, uh, training them and making sure that how else can we get better in addressing domestic violence. This is a an an application that we're 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 currently, we're gonna start testing. And what this is, is an application for everybody to to be able to, and it's mobile, you don't have to download it, you just. Try to pro- promote it and be aggressive in promoting it, and what it does is it starts the process, if somebody's having some problems. You don't have to call a police officer, you can start just engaging in this application, and then it goes to the police department, it goes to the advocates. So that we can start getting them the help that they need, this is one part of what we're doing, the other thing that we need to definitely do. Is our Matt campaigning to attract generation Z and millennials, and that we're gonna do through, you know, Snapchat, Instagram, TikTok. And becoming more aggressive in those social media platforms to be able to engage that demographic, because that is a demographic that is being victimized right now. Our to our three deaths that happened this year, year to day, are all between between the ages of sixteen and twenty four. So what are we doing wrong? We're 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 engaging the wrong demographic already, so we need to make sure that we engage them to the social media. The other thing is, uh, the female empowerment presentation, we want to make sure that we engage also our councilwomen. To make sure that they speak up and engage in, you know, video format and placing it out to the public. Uh, you know, I saw a billboard, uh, there by Shiloh where you got a bunch of entrepreneur females, you know, our entrepreneurs from Five Fifty Pizza. You know, Gabby Cardena, you have all that that billboard there, and so we want to. Uh, reach out to them and making sure that maybe they, we can engage them as well to speak up and maybe make a video with them. And so that way it doesn't come from the police department telling them, report, because we know that doesn't work. So we want to make sure that we engage our community and getting them more involved to to engage them, so. And of course, revamping our MPD website, that's already in the works, uh, our management this year, uh, last year gave us, uh, fifty thousand dollars to revamp it. That's already in the works, so in that website, within that website, it's gonna be just a click of a button, report abuse. And that way they can just click there and they can guide them through, they don't have to call us, they can just engage them through our website, so. These are the things that we're doing, I think that, uh, most of the the situations that we're currently, um, seeing. Uh, right now in this atmosphere is the fact that a lot of women tend to not press charges. They tend to withdraw charges, and they also tend to remove protective orders, and so. The one thing that I will come back through budget and through management is that police officers are very expensive. A detective to continue, and I know that, uh, you know, anybody that's worked as SBU, SBU, uh, uh, cases. They get a case, remember that we receive about over two hundred cases a month of this. So they get a case and once they get that case, and they they either arrest or they don't, they fail to prosecute, we move on to the next case. So one of the gaps that we've seen is that we don't follow up with the victim, because the detective is already passed that case, and so we don't follow up with them. So one of the things that we talked with management about is, let's get civilians to do the work that you don't need a a badge and gun to do. And that's something that we're gonna come back with very aggressive, that instead of asking for more police officers and asking for more investigators. We're gonna come back and asking for, you know, investigative support specialists, which probably pay pay half the salary of what you're paying the detective. You're gonna be asking for advocates, they probably pay less also than an investigative support specialist. Why? Because that is the only way that we'll be able to follow up and making sure that we get better at what we do on a daily basis in our operations itself. So definitely it's something that we're doing, of course, with this, you know, uh, survivor safe center, it would be ideal because. Once you become a victim, it's very hard to go to a police headquarters because it's very institutional, and sometimes you know that sometimes a suspect is when it's gonna be there. It makes it very hard for that victim to go. So what do you want to do, you want to make sure that you separate that, have your your investigator component, your district attorney and and their medical component all in one house. And that way they can get all the services away from the police headquarters and making sure that they get that, you know, all the help that they need. So that's where we're at with domestic violence, you know, uh, as as fast as I could, but if you have any questions.
Mayor?
Which one?
Just a quick question. Right now, you said two hundred calls a month on domestic assault, death of domestic violence?
So there is, uh, two thousand year to date, there's seven thousand nine hundred a year.
And where are currently the safe exams, the sexual assault forensic exams, where where are those currently conducted?
So the sexual assault, that's five hundred a cases a year, uh, including children and and adults.
But the safe exams are just.
Either LMC or doctor's hospital.
Just the two, right? Okay.
Go ahead.
So my understanding from, um, the officer that presented at the Domestic Violence Coalition Meeting. Was that, um, sometimes the nurses, it's it's difficult to engage them. Whether, uh, it's because of a, they don't have enough for the shifts that they carry. Or some other reason that sometimes it is not as easy to engage the nurses for these exams. And so I was hoping if we could set up a meeting with our hospitals so that we can coordinate. I I imagine five hundred cases is a lot of of need out there. And if if our hospitals are certified, because it's a certification process to be that that safe place. Um, for the exams, then, um, maybe we need to communicate better what the needs are, what the real life needs are. To ensure that these victims can get treated in, um, in a very, uh, quickly. To respect what they've gone through and and then to to give them the services that they need. And so if we can have maybe a little bit of coordination, I don't know if that'll help, but I think, um, in this community, it's all about collaboration. And and putting heads together to see how we can make the services better for the victims.
Yeah, so we we have to take into consideration a lot of the, uh, some of the the synergies that we currently have, uh, available here locally, they're not, uh. Both certified acute and non-acute, right? So when we're talking about non-acute, you have to take him either to Driscoll or to San Antonio or to the Valley, because in Laredo, there's none. Certified, there's, I know there's one in the process of getting that certification, and we gotta understand that a sane kid is like. You know, performing a pass me on a on a child, right, and so it's very, it is, it's 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 very, I want to say, it's very hard. For either a mom to see that going through with her child or the child itself to go through that process. So when we're talking about this kind of cases and talking about sexual assault, moving away a little bit from domestic violence. Uh, sexual assault is a totally different area that we need to address, and this is why it's 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 urgent that we that we address this. And we can go to the hospital, but the way it should work is when you go to the hospital, you should have a room that is just for that. You don't take him to the general area and re-victimize the victim again, right, and so a lot of those things, it's very hard to tell the hospital. Hey, you 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 have to do this because this is what you require, you know, and things like that, because they're a hospital. And so right now, I think it's it's, we can do that, definitely, I think it probably help. But at the end of the day is what's available, when we get there is, is there one available or not available, there's none, there's not one available. We're gonna have to get your clothes, provide you with this other clothes, and then we'll see you tomorrow if there's a sane nurse in the morning, so that's the process right now. And I know that, uh, we we try to get very creative into maybe, you know, providing more incentives, uh, to maybe those nurses, but I think. For us, the best way to address this is to have, you know, us, our own sane nurses that be on call. And whenever the Laredo Police Department gets a call, that that sane nurse is available from the city to perform those those sane kids. I think it's 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 better like that because now we can, we can make sure that they are available whenever we need them. We don't have to rely on the hospitals.
Right, well, I I I do think that because it's medical, they need medical services or could need further medical services. That we start with a conversation and and see how we can pool resources.
Yes, absolutely.
And I appreciate so much the dedication of Laredo Police Department in confronting these issues head on. Because it's a real need in our community. Thank you.
Any other question? All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Fifty seven D? D two?
E two.
E two.
Mayor, that's my.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just we'll make it quick, um, discussion of possible action to amend the City of Laredo Court of Code of Ordinances. Section nineteen dash three sixty four restricted parking areas to include no parking, standing and stopping anytime and tollway zone. On both the north and south side of the twelve thousand block of Riverbank Drive between I sixty nine West Fretes Road and FM fourteen seventy two Mines Road. And any other matters incident there too, I know the Port Police have been out there, um, coming up with some suggestions on how they can. Like, uh, help improve like their, um, facilitation of not not, um. It's just the trucks that are kind of stopping in areas that they shouldn't be, um, and then I think. I don't know if you guys want to present that, if you want to present that, Chief.
Good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of council, Ricardo Gonzalez is the Chief of our Police Department. So, um, Mayor Protemp, as you mentioned, yes, uh, we have Port Police out there doing a study in the area, and of course. This area on Riverbank always gives us challenges because of the way it's laid out, you have the commercial district, uh, with residential. That whole residential portion has been booming, you now, we now have a a middle school out there, so. Uh, it is crucial that we prevent these large vehicles, uh, moving into this area where they're restricted from going into. Parking, making all this nuisance, uh, so yes, uh, putting up, um, traffic control devices. To allow us to conduct enforcement, aggressive enforcement to prevent or curtail these offenses, uh, would be tremendous help. For for our officers working that area.
So Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, there's, there's, um, you know, there's obvious things that shouldn't be done, but a lot of these drivers are from out of town. They may not be familiar with this area or our laws, so the easiest thing, and by ordinance, it says that if council can designate this as. A tollway zone and a no parking, no standing, no stopping zone. Um, then the police can have an easier time enforcing. In addition, there's a shoulder right now that could be used for some temporary loading and offloading, um, into. One of the, uh, industrial businesses that's on this street. Um, so I think highlighting that that is designated as parking where they won't be penalized for parking. But, uh, restricting it during the business day and not allowing for overnight parking. That way, they're there to go in, get in line to go into the business, but they're not gonna be parking. In the middle of the street or on the sides, because I don't think a lot of people realize how bad it gets, because they really do. Get off their truck and even if it's one way, one way, there's a bottleneck point, um, they'll just park, uh, there. And it, not to say that they're trying to do anything wrong, it's just, this is a heavy, um, industrial mixed with residential area. And the harmony isn't there, so, um, we just want to put the signage there and help facilitate. And move the traffic along.
Correct, we don't want to impede with business, uh, business growth, but we want to be able to manage the area a lot better. And like I mentioned, um, not only what's being proposed, but other, uh, other proposals that we have through, uh, a recent study that was made. For one of our port sergeants, uh, would help us, uh, will assist us in doing that.
My motion is, uh, as written, as as my item is written.
Motion second.
Yes, Chief.
Are are we, uh, in that motion, are we also including the height restrictors for the residential area?
Um, we, I'll I'll amend it to include the possibility of of working with the traffic department.
Problems is that the the resident residential area keeps getting those tractor trailers going inside the residential area. So we can provide high restrictors on those in the entrance of those residential areas, it will help out a lot with with the residents there.
Yeah, I'll amend it to include that and then, um, the height restrictors working, Mr. Neb with traffic to.
And the fire department for the lighter trucks.
And the fire department for the feasibility on the height restrictors and also to designate that that parking area. There, uh, to make it a a tollway zone like for overnight parking, but a temporary loading and unloading during business hours.
I'd like to have the member for the second there.
All right.
So, anything, anything else?
Motion second with amendment?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, uh, the next items were thirty seven and thirty eight, so unless they have anything. To present, I'll just make a motion to approve thirty seven and thirty eight.
Second, motion second, all in favor? Opposed, motion pass.
Thank you.
Back on, Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to approve appointments to commissions, boards and committees.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Yes. Five, one.
Motion open of communications, presentation by Mayor Richard Trevino, Dr. Trevino.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
You're right. I think we're running general comments.
They did already.
Yes, sir.
Did you?
Yeah, already did.
Yeah, it's.
He already did that one?
Yes, we did that.
He did that one already.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Great, okay. Mayor, motion to open up public hearing, introduce your ordinances.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion pass.
Number one, public hearing, order to amend the zoning. Orders map is iterated by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol in Lot One, Block One, Alexander Commercial Subdivision, Phase fourteen, located at eleven nineteen Penwick Drive, Suite two oh one, fifteen hundred and fifty-two square feet. The plan zoning commission recommend approval of proposed special use permanent staff support the application. Number two, public hearing, introductory ordinance amending the zoning orders map is iterated by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol in Lot One, Block One, Alexander Commercial Subdivision, Phase fourteen, located at eleven nineteen Penwick Drive, Suite one oh four, two thousand seven forty-three square feet. The plan zoning commission recommended approval of proposed special use permanent staff support the application. Number three, public hearing, introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map is iterated by rezoning approximately ninety-eight point eight-nine acres as further described by meets and bounds and attached exhibit A located at East Cuatro Vientos Road and Celito Lido Boulevard from A G to R one A. Plan zoning commission recommended approval of proposed zone change staff does not support the R one A zoning designation for the entire track, but instead a B three zoning designation for an area being two hundred and fifty foot buffer along the western edge of the track that supports an R one A zoning designation for the remainder of the track. Number four, public hearing, order to amend the zoning map city Laredo by rezoning Lot One, Block One, Benia Plaid, and approximately point forty acre track as further described by meets and bounds and attached exhibit A located at eighty-two oh seven and eighty-two oh nine San Lorenzo Drive from R two multifamily residential district to B three community business district. The plan zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed zone change, and staff did not support the application. Number five, public hearing, introductory ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map city Laredo by rezoning approximately two point six acres as further described by meets and bounds and attached exhibit A located north of Wright Ranch Boulevard and east of Cuatro Vientos Road from R one A seeing family reduced area district to B three community business district. The plan zoning commission recommended approval of proposed zone change, and staff supports the application. Number six, public hearing, introductory ordinance amending zoning map city Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit by mobile home dealer sales only on approximately five point one acres as further described by meets and bounds and attached exhibit A located north of Cuatro Vientos Boulevard and west of U S Highway eighty-three. The plan zoning commission recommend approval of proposed zone change, or the proposed conditional use permanent staff supports the application. Number seven, ordinance authorized city manager to amend fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five of the convention visitors bureau department fund budget by increasing revenues and expenses by additional se- amount of seventy thousand, or to appropriate five thousand in seed money provided by the National Development Association Region Six, an estimate of sixty-five thousand in revenue from conference attendees and sponsors. These funds will be utilized to cover any expenses incurred associated with the conference and pre-conference trainings. Number eight, public hearing, introductory ordinance, the city council of the city of Laredo, Texas authorized city manager to amend the city of Laredo fiscal year twenty twenty-five capital improvement fund to accept an appropriate revenue in the amount of eight million five hundred thousand for the state infrastructure bank loan agreement for the West Laredo multi-mobile trade corridor, Phase Two and Phase Three. Funding will be allocated in the capital improvement fund, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative, providing severability clause, and providing for publication declaring an effective date. Number nine, public hearing, instruct- public hearing discussion on the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one light manufacturing issue on a tract of land totaling six acres, more or less as described by meets and bounds and attached exhibit A, and on his annexation track, one Saldaña track located northeast of F M fourteen seventy-two and Fingo Vaya Drive at La Paso School. The plan and zoning commission recommended approval of the annexation initial zoning. Staff supports the annexation and initial zoning.
Number one, for or against, for or against, for or against.
Motion to close and introduce.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Number two, for or against, for or against, for or against.
Motion to close and introduce.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion pass. Number three, for or against, for or against, for or against.
Second.
Just one second, for this one, uh, sorry, for this one, they plan is only recommended R one A for the whole track, but we were thinking B three would be better along the highway. So just sort of to confirm, is it for the whole track, or for the for the uh, for the two hundred, the Satch recommendation, which is B three for the two hundred fifty feet along the highway, and then R one A for the remainder of the track?
Thank you, Ms. Vanessa.
For the whole thing?
Uh, yeah, it's for the whole thing.
For the whole thing?
Because, and and we spoke to the developers here, and and they're, uh, I don't know if the engineers here. I think Holland was here earlier, I don't know, they probably uh, left. Uh, but they're in agreement to make a a noise redundant wall for the, for those uh, houses there. Uh, Mr. Chavez, as you are aware, uh, aware as well, and uh, also, and and because this is why I'm I'm, I would say, uh, I'm I'm for it, because I support this, because for commercial to approve some, to make them approve commercial in that area of town, I would say, commercial's really not gonna develop on that area of town until twenty to thirty years from now, maybe, it's it's, uh, you know, it's uh, right in the outskirts of the city, and that's my only.
Yeah, I guess our concern was just, of course, high houses right next to the highway, and then, you know, having that the like commercial to provide maybe some amenities for those houses, you know, some stores, restaurants, whatever.
Yeah, and 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 uh, yeah, and another reason is why, you know, the these developers have a have a great reputation throughout South Texas and and the designs and stuff, and we've been in the, in meetings for the past uh, couple of months with the, you know, with this.
Okay.
No, no, thank you. Yeah.
All right.
Motion to close and introduce.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number four, for or against, for or against, for or against.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question real quick, um, uh, this uh,
item here, this this location, do they have a a s- access to the sewer, or are they on the septic? Because this is an area that has a lot of um, sewer, I mean, uh, septic tanks, there's not, they're not all hooked up to the sewer system, so if we allow.
I would have to check, but the rule is, is that once they're annexed, if they're within two hundred and, two hundred feet, I think, of a line, then they have to connect.
Yeah, I don't think they are.
So, we can, we can check.
But can you have a business that's that's hooked up to a septic, is that allowable? Like, would they even be able to get a certificate of occupancy? If they're not providing, if they're not.
I believe so. I believe so, but I'll check. I will check on it.
Well, my concern is that we approved the rezoning, now they're subjected to higher, you know, taxes and stuff, and then they can't open because they don't have sewer. I I don't know if this.
Well, the zoning would allow, the B three zone allows pretty much everything that the R two would allow, um, except now it allows additional. So the multifamily would be allowed. The only thing that probably wouldn't be allowed is mo- is the manufactured housing. So, cuz you need the R three and or the R one M H. So the B three would allow pretty much all the uses that the residential zones allow, plus now you have your commercial.
Well, the zoning, but certificate of occupancy by meeting the requirements, uh, you know, this.
That's, you're correct.
This is an area that doesn't have sewer access, it stops at a certain point, and we've been trying to get sewer on, to this whole thing, and we're kinda have some ideas, but I just didn't know if this spot, it's kind of in the middle?
I'm not, I am not sure. Of everything we looked at, that was not one of the things.
Well, if we approve it, it's fine, I mean, I was.
If they don't, if they don't meet the rules, even with the, with the upgraded zoning, you know, the zoning is just step one of whether you can get a building permit, you have to meet, of course, all the other performance standards
Right.
associated with construction, setback, layout, all of that.
It's just a lot of times people come, and they try to do something, then they say nobody told them.
Yeah.
And they weren't aware, and I just.
I can address that. Yeah, so as part of the building permit process, they're gonna have to either show a connection, or if there's not not a line available within the two hundred feet ordinance requirement, then a septic tank will have to be installed. That would have to be reviewed and approved not only by the utility department, but also by the, by the health department.
I thought we had an ordinance, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Thought we had an ordinance that required you to have access to the sewer. I, I think, like, they may be kind of um, as the current zoning at the time, we, they they didn't have access, but now, since there is, I'm just, I'm.
No, 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 the the ordinance requires that there's a line available, but then, if there's no line available, then they still have to provide that septic tank, which will be regulated uh, and approved through the health department, and under T C Q, they have to be uh, also uh, reported to them.
Motion to close and introduce.
Second, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number five, for or against, for or against, for or against. Second, motion second, all in favor?
Mayor, I have just one question.
Go ahead.
Ms. Ms. Guerra, um, this uh, area, are are you sure it's in District One? I mean, I I I do not, I don't have any.
Let me look at the, let me look at the map.
Yes, I will, it it's, it's to, it's directly to the west of of my area, so my assumption, but it's an assumption, I I don't.
We can check on it, but that's what our maps show, that it's District One.
First, phase two is yours.
Okay, I I withdraw my question, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number six, for or against, for or against, for or against.
Motion opposing introduce.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number seven, for or against, for or against, for or against.
Motion to close and introduce.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number eight, for or against, for or against, for or against.
Motion to close and introduce.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number nine, for or against, for or against, for or against.
Um, hold, hold, this is an, an annexation request. Um, this is only a public hearing, no action uh, is requested at this time. It'll come back at the next meeting for action.
For action. Thank you.
All right, so no need for a fourth.
And if you'd like, I can do a presentation.
No, ma'am. Mayor, if I may? Mayor, if I may, council, council to introduce number ten, introduce your ordinances.
Sorry.
No, no motion, just introducing.
I I do have a question, Mayor, number ten.
Number ten?
Yes, is is Mr. Sanchez here? Thank you. Um, so in in reviewing the the other items that you have uh, presenting to council, and you talk about monthly rents, and they're in the thousands of dollars, and this one stood out because the monthly rent is only two hundred and fifty dollars. And I was just wondering why.
Yes, uh, Gilberto Sanchez, for the record, I do have a little presentation that I'm gonna go through.
In that case, let's skip this item, then we'll wait till the end.
It's a fuel pad, basically, that's where they're gonna put, uh, they're gonna put the uh, the the gas tank, so we're basically gonna make the money out of the percentage of the gas they sell.
Oh, okay, cuz I I I I looked it up also, and I, it just didn't make sense to me, but I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the final reading of ordinances, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Second.
Will you read your vote on it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Motion to approve, number eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Number, number twenty-four needs to be amended to read Southwest Border Regional Commission.
We'll pull that one out.
Okay.
Twenty-four and twenty-one.
We can, we can approve that one with the amended, with the amendment, on twenty-four?
What about twenty-one, you said?
Table this one, on twenty-one? Just take it out, okay, we'll take it out and discuss it.
All right.
Okay, approved number twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight have been done already, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six.
Can we take out forty-six?
Exception of forty-six.
All right. Motion? Second? The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Number twenty-one. Number twenty-one.
Mayor, this one, I have for twenty-one, is uh, does this require any money that was not already previously budgeted for this, or is this just an agreement with no money involved?
Uh, this, the the funding from the city was actually put into the budget from last year. So that was, that was the project that's coming through, uh, text out for the grant, our matching money, we had, we had some money that was going into this project, so.
Motion to approve twenty-one.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Word's left twenty-four, uh, this one, I don't know if we approve, the amended?
Number twenty-four uh, needs to be amended to read Southwest Border Regional Commission, parentheses, S B R C, close parentheses, instead of the Economic Development Administration, E D A.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. Motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Forty-six. Forty-six.
Item forty-six, consideration to renew annual contract F Y twenty-three dash oh four five with Squarey Services LLC, Los Fresnos Texas, in an amount of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to provide services in the maintenance of all the water treatment plants, S C A D A, monitoring, and electrical controls under preventive maintenance and emergency response objectives. Pricing is based on a flat hourly rate for management, a technician, a system integrator, a journeyman electrician, and a professional engineer. All services will be secured on an as-needed basis. The term of this contract shall be for a period of one year, beginning as of the date of its execution, and is contingent upon the availability of appropriated funds. There is no price increase during the last extension period. This contract can be renewed, one additional one-year extension period upon mutual agreement of the parties. Funding is available in the Water Works Fund. Um, I really am highlighting this particular item, because with um, there's been a lot of discussion, uh, bond-related discussions, and in that comes up monies for utilities. So this is separate, completely separate from the bond, but I think there is some misunderstanding in the public that utilities is um, something that doesn't require a lot of inputs, right? The the water comes out, you do minimally, minimally clean it, and then it should be fine, and uh, why should we spend a lot of money, essentially? Uh, and I think this highlights the complexity of what it takes to maintain the utilities water services department, so that we can provide clean water for our citizens. And so, especially when you um, you've listed here, the um, it requires management, a technician, a system integrator, a journeyman electrician, and a professional engineer, just as one part of the maintenance of the water treatment plant. This doesn't even talk about the chemical injections that are needed, nor the pipes to run it through. Um, and so that's really why I I I I don't really require anything, for me, unless you have something to add.
If I may add, uh, a little something for the record, uh, it's for the water treatment and also for the wastewater treatment, so it's for, for both, both uh, I guess, both systems that we have, right? And it's uh, maintenance for both plants, for wastewater and water, and also in emergency on-call services that we have. It's all flat rate, but we do have every so often that we give an emergency for them to come in, they they provide us a rate whenever there's a need for them to come in as an emergency, case like this.
Thank you, thank you, and I think that um, talks about the high level of service that's provided to our citizens when we're talking about providing clean water to them, and then also taking care of the sewage that we're required to take care of. Thank you very much. I'd like to close and and, or move to, oh, I'm sorry, I'll I'll cede to Councilmember Cigarro, if that's okay.
Well, I just have a quick question, and I'm, I apologize, cuz I'm trying to find um, just some information. Have we worked with this company before?
Yes, this is the the second renewal that we've done with them. This will be the second renewal that we have.
But this isn't E squared services.
Yes. Squarey Services.
Well, just because um, can I talk to legal really quickly? I don't know what.
Go ahead.
Really, may I just?
Mayor, I, I think if we could, I mean, is this timely, can we table it?
We would.
Again, it's, it's our, these are services, uh, we have a computerized system that provides us levels for tanks and our wastewater system. Um, I don't wanna say they're not time-sensitive, but again, these are services that.
It's a renewal contract, we're just bringing it forward to council, so we can uh, proceed with it.
Okay, we can come back to that, Mayor, if we can, you can.
Yes.
Let me go ahead and table number, table number forty-seven, please.
Table.
Second.
Motion table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Motion to reasons of Laredo City Council. Motion to reasons the Laredo City Council and convenes the Laredo Mass Transit Board?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Motion to approve number fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six.
Second.
Motion, all in favor? Second, do we have second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Motion to adjourn the Laredo Mass Transit Board and recommend, recommend as the Laredo City Council.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we wanna bring back number forty-six, Mayor, or do you wanna go into executive session?
Mayor, twenty-one, did we table forty-seven?
Yeah, we did.
And forty-six, for now?
Forty-six.
We have it, we have it, forty-six.
Forty-seven.
Just forty-seven, correct.
Okay. So I say we go into executive session and we come back on forty-six. Motion to enter into executive session, um, authorize Texas Government Code Section five-five-one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, five-five-one point zero seven two, deliberations about real property, five-five-one point zero seven three, deliberation about gifts and donations, um, five-five-one point zero seven four, personnel matters, five-five-one point zero seven six, deliberations about security devices and or, five-five-one point zero eight seven, economic development, uh, and, and with staff and anyone relevant for items fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Executive session.
Back to regular council.
Yeah, back to regular council.
Mayor, motion to extend the meeting to eleven P M.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Motion to go back into executive session, please.
Back to executive session.
Thank you. Back to regular session. Mayor, if I may? Go ahead. For number fifty, executive session item, for staff to proceed as directed.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
For number fifty-one, for staff to proceed as directed as well?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye.
Opposed.
I abstain. As a number of this is our...
Okay. Abstaining. And for number fifty-two, motion pass, right? Yes, sir. Okay, motion pass. And for number fifty-two, for staff to proceed as directed.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Any other council items?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, Mayor. Oh, we bring forty-six.
Forty-six.
Item forty-six. Motion to bring back number forty-six.
Motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Motion to forty-five and forty-six.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
Any other council items that are ready?
Yes. Fifty-seven, D one. And...
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass. Fifty-seven, B one.
D one.
D one, D one, fifty-seven, D one.
It, it's yours.
Oh. That's yours.
I'm actually, I'm not good. I'm a...
I gotta do it too.
That's, okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I was debating on tabling it because obviously we have ten minutes left, but, um, I guess for city management, I'll mention the idea that came up by, actually by constituent, um, and comparing it to other, uh, internship programs and, um, we obviously have a civic engagement problem in our world, um, so getting more young people engaged, uh, the constituent brought up the idea of having a, a summer internship program for, the idea was rising high school seniors, uh, but, and, and specifically paid, you know, so they actually, instead of having to be forced to get a summer job, they can actually work. Um, I know that would be very complicated, the goal would be summer of twenty-six, but the motion is just for, you know, I know everyone's very busy right now, but for staff management to look into it and, um, the logistics of, of what it would take. And I know that some of the high school seniors being under the age of eighteen, that could be a concern, so if you guys came back and said, maybe it's better to have college, college students who are, uh, at T M U or they're away for, and they'll come back for the summer and make it a college internship, that's also a thought. Basically, I'm asking you to, uh, come up with some ideas on how we can offer a, a paid summer internship for either high school or college students from Laredo.
All right, motion second. Go ahead.
Um, I, I'll do less than much, so, uh, I just wanted to, ex, management, I just wanted to express my, um, concern and, and hopefully you take it, uh, with, I, it, it is not that I do not support youth involved in our offices, I just think it needs to be planned very carefully. Um, I know when you have, um, a young person who has zero experience in whatever the area is, there is a significant drain on employees' time to educate that person to get up to speed and, and to make, um, decisions a, about whatever area it's in. So I, I think we just have to be incredibly, um, careful about what offices we would allow these, uh, interns to operate in and understand that when we enter into it, it is a, a drain on staff resources. Not that the goal is not worthy, but it should be approached with caution and, and perhaps in a limited way until the kinks are worked out. That's my only comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, well, I wanna thank you, um, Councilmember King for bringing this item. I think that children, uh, you know, our youth are our future and it's a, an investment in developing them, giving them the opportunity to, you know, I remember working when I was sixteen, you know, been working ever since pretty much, so, you know, I think they develop skills and, you know, it gives them a, a better appreciation for their city to be able to have this. I, I remember we brought the item also about working at the rec centers and getting paid, so I think internship and bringing, um, our high schoolers on board to, to work at the city is, you know, a good, uh, investment of our resources, so I appreciate the efforts that we make.
Mayor, go ahead.
Good evening, council, I'm Mayor, um, just to let you know, um, the, recently we had submitted an application to ring six interns from the Home to Texas Program, so six of them will be starting as well in the summer. Um, actually today we were, um, placing them amongst the different departments and I just thought, and we're gonna have one from the Bloomberg Program as well, that one's project dedicated already, it's not necessarily a department, but I just thought I would let you all know. Miriam Castillo, um, Director for Economic Development, for the record.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and second.
Mayor, if I, if I can also add on it, Councilman Tyler King, Linda Delante with the Human Resources Department, the City of Laredo is currently engaged with T M U at the Irish Program. That means we have the science students that are in, in our program, in our departments already. This will be our third cycle already, there are departments that participate in it, zero cost to the City of Laredo right now and we, and we have, we ask for the participation in the departments, in the science-based careers. So we've got a little bit of something going on for us already, so.
Yeah, the idea here for me is around civic engagement, so having, you know, um, rising seniors who are interested in government, working for, like the city one day, working, um, maybe they wanna be an engineer, maybe they wanna be a planner, maybe, or maybe